Go ahead and get started with our meeting for today. We are going to start our meeting today with a moment of silence, so we welcome you to join us for that, and then we'll follow that with the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, if you join us, we're going to stand, and we have a brand-new flag in this room, so we're excited about that, and we'll go ahead and start the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. So now we go to our introductions and announcements. I don't think I have any introductions today. Zach, do you have any introductions?
I do not.
Okay, all right. Okay, moving right along, we'll go ahead to the consideration of the agenda amendments. Do I have any amendments to the agenda? Okay, hearing none, I'll ask for a motion to pass the agenda for today. So moved. Okay, Barb? Second?
Second.
Thank you. All right, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye opposed? Okay, seeing none, the agenda has passed. All right, we'll move on to our citizens' time. When you came in to the room, there were some little cards to indicate that you were interested in sharing with citizens' time. I have one card at the moment. Is there anybody else who would like to share during citizens' time? All right, then Ms. Patty France.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Patty France, Hanover County. I worked for the Pomoneke Regional Library as part of the management team from 1986 until my retirement in July 2013. I'm a professional librarian with a master's degree from Drexel University in Philadelphia. As a Hanover taxpayer, I am very alarmed by some of the news that I hear about changes at PRL. Mr. Roberts, the new director, seems intent on reinventing the library system without any input from the community that supports the library. I'm a great believer in outreach services, and I was truly sad when during the recession we had to stop bookmobile services. However, the service was costly, too costly for the small benefit it provided. Furthermore, it appears that the era of the bookmobile has come to an end. Henrango County Public Library has given up their bookmobile for specially-equipped library vans, and Chesterfield is raising money to do something similar. A second concern of mine involves rumors that the Board of Trustees and Mr. Roberts has decided that the administration building is not serving the library system, and so plans are being made to abandon the building where all administration services are conveniently located together. I understand that a solution under consideration is to scatter centralized services into multiple branches. No longer will library collections be able to easily communicate with the director or assistant director, but public space will be compromised to create office space for all those now located here in Mechanicsville in the clock tower building. The public spaces of seven branches are barely big enough to serve their communities, no matter whether we are talking about Ashland, Atlee, Goochland, Hanover, Mechanicsville, Montpelier, or Rockville. This plan would be a disservice to all the people who use the Pomoneke Regional Library. The citizens of our community have worked diligently over the years to create public spaces that serve as our libraries. They've done book trades, book sales, hard-fought bond referendums. I hope that you will not take away valuable public space for centralized services. I know I am only one citizen. However, it is my hope that the board and the director will solicit opinions and listen to the people of Goochland and Hanover Counties. Thank you. I don't know who's the secretary, but do you know this?
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, just checking, would anybody else like to speak? All right, let's move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the board response to citizens' time. If any board members have anything they'd like to say in response. All right, I think some of the things that you spoke about, the board is actually not even aware of at the moment, so I think we'll wait maybe till later in the meeting. So, thank you. All right, we'll move on to the next point, which is consideration of the consent agenda. On the consent agenda, we have the draft minutes from the August 27, 2025 Board of Trustees special meeting. We have the acceptance of the August 2025 board financial reports, the acceptance of the August 2025 warrants, the acceptance of the August 2025 complete deposit record, and the acceptance of the August 2025 fund schedule. I think that August 27 meeting was just a regular meeting, is that correct? Wasn't a special meeting? Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Does anyone have any, well, I guess, do I need a motion and then a second, and then we can discuss? So moved. Thank you, Barb. Do I have a second?
Second.
Jody, second, thank you. Any discussion about any of those items?
Madam Chair, I have a quick question about the warrants, just for clarification. Vanguard Identification Systems, I'm assuming that is a supplier for cards?
Yeah, library cards.
Library cards? Is that the physical card, I mean, like a physical cards?
Physical cards, yeah, yeah. Without King William.
We updated them to remove the old counties.
Oh, okay. Gotcha. Okay, and so that would be a one-time charge?
Yes.
Okay. All right, but that is a result of the King William departure?
Yes.
That big charge? Okay. And one other quick question I have, Edward Scott Broderick, was he a summer performer?
A performer.
I'm just not familiar with him. Okay. Okay, thank you, I appreciate the answers.
I would like to request a brief change to the minutes, if I may, and that's under the section about the audit committee. In the end of that first paragraph where it says several items were accomplished by the committee, I'd like to just add by PRL staff in the committee, because PRL staff actually carried the load of all of that. But those things are all true, but I'd like to just add PRL staff, if we can, to that. You see where that is on page six at the top, several items were accomplished by, and I would just say the PRL staff and committee, including, just to make that clear. I did very little of those things. I have to thank Jamie and Ken and obviously Ace now for making all of those things happen. Any other discussion about the consent agenda?
All right, so can I have a motion to, madam, I move that we accept the consent agenda with the addition as noted in the minutes.
Okay, thank you, Barb. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jody. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Okay, that has passed. All right, we move on to the director's report. Zach, you're up.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
I'm going to keep my time up here for the director's report a little briefer than I normally would, because we do have a lot of new business to go over, and I expect some discussion back and forth. But in August, we finished our summer reading program. We had over 1,000 more participants than last year, so we saw an 18% increase year-over-year from last year. We've continued to see our circulation and programming numbers steadily increase as well, so it's nice to see in almost every single location an increase in our annual participation from the public, coming in for our programs, coming in for our books and materials, and using our spaces. So we're seeing a nice trend upwards. We have some great programming that happened in the month of August. There were some, one of the things, and I'll go over this in a moment, but you see in your board pack, there are some visuals that are included this month. That's going to be a recurring theme going forward, just some photographs from the different branches, talking and highlighting some of their programs, to give you guys an idea. All the branches had some exciting programs this month, and you can kind of read about them a little bit here. We had some good patron feedback come into the branches in August about things like our increased visibility for some of our programming, as well as some of the new materials that we've been displaying a little differently. In the previous months, we kind of changed some of our purchasing. We included, over the last many months, some new displays, and so we heard some good feedback from the branches during my branch visits in August, and that feedback continues to go up. We continue to see new library card users at a good rate. In the month of August, we made over 200 new library cards throughout the system. September, just as a reminder, is library card month, so for those folks that are listening to this at a later date on YouTube, if you do not have a library card, September is a great month for that. We do have a couple of vacancies that were filled this month inside the branch. The director was hired, of course, in administration in August. We also had an associate hired in Ashland. We do have two vacancies currently, both in administration. One is our IT specialist, and one is our collection strategies department librarian. We'll talk a little bit more about hiring in new business later. Just, are there any questions about the board report? There's some ongoing facilities issues, which we'll talk about in a little bit, because I did meet with General Services Director Dana Fox for Hanover County this last week, and I'll kind of relay some of what I said to her about some of our ongoing longer-term maintenance issues. There's been some things that have kind of been put to the side for some period of time, and so I expressed to her our interest in moving those things forward and getting those things fixed, but we'll talk about that in a little bit. Any questions about the director's report?
I don't, go ahead. No, I was just gonna say, I love all the pictures, thank you.
Yeah, I was also gonna say, this presentation is great, thank you.
And one of the things that we're going to do on new business is I'm going to lay out the new template that I'm going to start in October. It's providing the same information, but it's more visual, it's going to collect it in a little different way that's a little easier and more, in my personal opinion, intuitive. That will be kind of an ongoing process, because I want them to be something that the public and the board is able to kind of easily digest. And one of the things that I appreciate is annual statistics included in this. One of the things that we don't really include is like year-over-year increases or decreases, so going forward, that will be part of the director's report, and I'll go over that in a few minutes in new business, because I'm going to show you the template that has been shared with all the branch managers and all the division chiefs, so that we can kind of begin using a little different thing. It's going to collect the same information as we've always been collecting, but it's going to lay it out in a little more, what I hope is a user-friendly way.
So I just had a question, and I don't know if we know the answer to this, but looking at the digital statistics, I know these start after King William left. I'm just wondering, are we seeing a decrease in digital circulation? Because from my perspective, it looks kind of steady. Is that, okay.
Well, yeah.
So we haven't really seen a decrease in digital circulation?
Not yet, but there's also the consideration of losing a county plus lowering the number as well.
Okay.
So, I mean, and we can't tell you exactly where all that is coming from, but we're seeing basically, we're spending about the same pretty consistently.
Okay, all right, that's interesting. And then I did have one question about the way, and maybe this is something that will continue or won't continue, but in the statistical report, this one that breaks it down by county, there's always been like a grouping that can't be broken up based on branch, so it gives like a total and then says, it doesn't include ones not assigned to individual branches. So I'm just wondering, why are there some that aren't assigned to a branch? Is that because they didn't join at a branch, or?
Do you have historical context for that?
Well, hoopla doesn't assign to branches.
Oh, okay, so those would be more hoopla checkouts?
Yeah, and then also candy. Overdrive is the only digital resource that you can assign to branches.
Oh, okay. All right, that makes sense.
Is that unique to the vendor? They just don't do it?
Yeah, 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 hoopla won't do it.
Huh, okay. Okay, that makes sense, thank you, I appreciate that. Any other questions? Happy to see the audits moving along, so we're on target for that, so that's exciting. Thank you for all of your hard work for that, so.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Before we go on, I just want to recognize Faye Pritchard has walked in.
She's on the Hanover County Board of Supervisors, so thank you for joining us. Did you want to say anything?
No.
Just here to observe. Okay, great, well, welcome, we're glad you're here with us. All right, the next item on our board is the legal counsel updates. Mr. Walter.
Good morning, Madam Chair, and members of the board. Two quick items, the first is something that I've communicated to all of you as we negotiated the director's contract, and as he's come on board. The board offered, and Mr. Roberts accepted, a leave package. When it was discussed and negotiated and the contract was formed, we used Hanover's PTO approach. PRL continues to use the annual leave and sick leave, so it's been discussed as sort of a one-for-one conversion over to that. We don't want to reinvent the wheel for an individual employee, and so we've discussed with Mr. Roberts about converting his PTO leave over to an annual leave and sick leave, and that going forward, he would continue to approve leave in accordance with PRL policies. So I have a proposed motion. It is a relatively straightforward amendment to his contract, but because the leave provisions are in there, we'll need to amend the contract. The board would need to approve that. I don't, it's really purely clerical, we're not changing any of the substance, so I do recommend that the library board approve a motion to amend that contract to conform to PRL leave policies. I think probably now is the appropriate time to do that.
And I move that the library board approve the amendment to the director's employment contract to inform the leave provisions current to PRL policies.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All of those opposed? Okay, that has passed, thank you.
Thank you. The second thing, and there's really not much in terms of update, but I did want to follow up. I've talked with the director, I think the plan is probably in November, I will have a more formal presentation on the Freedom of Information Act. If there are any topics that you all are interested in, let me know. I'm thinking I may update, I know a few years ago, there was one on making motions and things like that. That's a hard copy. We have enough new members of the library board, I may just send that out by email to you all, but if there's any topics, whether it's a formal presentation, or you just would like to have something in hard copy, let me know. Whatever I can do to help, make sure that you can do your jobs in a way that you tripped up on procedure, or you don't do something, not sure whether or not you can do it, please just let me know. But I think that the plan is for November for me to have something on the agenda for that, and I look forward to giving that presentation. But that's all I have for this.
Okay, thank you so much, I appreciate that. Before you leave, just to follow up, actually on a citizen comment that we had at the last meeting regarding email addresses for the board, there have been steps forward made to have all of the board members have a pomonekilibrary.org email address, and so I asked that you give us a few days to kind of figure it out, because we just got instructions today about how to get on that and how to get that on our mobile devices and stuff like that, but hopefully within the next week, we will all be on the pomonekilibrary.org system. So I just wanted to give that update.
And I appreciate that, and while I will talk some more about it in November, I strongly encourage that any PRL business going forward, that you use that email, nothing else. If a request comes in, it's a whole lot simpler, we don't have to ask you to go through that, but it's also, we should be preserving your communications with respect to your official business, and we don't want to rely on the Gmails and those things in the world, which we know are not always as reliable as our own system, so, thank you.
Okay, yeah, thank you. All right, we'll move on to our standing committee reports, so we'll start with the finance committee. Barb?
The finance committee met on September 10. We discussed the preliminary fiscal year '27 budget, which we'll hear a lot more about today, and we hope to get started on reviewing the financial bylaws after the first of the year, well into the spring is when we'll try to get started with that. And our next meeting will be Wednesday, January 14, at 10:00 a.m. in the administration building. And that's it.
All right. Okay, moving on to the personnel committee. Jody, do you have any updates?
No new updates, other than we need to start thinking about a date in the upcoming months on how to discuss the evaluation reports for our director. So if some people could get back to me on what dates in the next two months, that could work for you, and we can figure out a location and everything as well.
May I suggest that you throw out a couple dates?
Okay.
And then we can.
Pick through that?
Yeah.
Okay.
That would kind of pare it down a little bit.
All right. Okay, moving on, we'll go to old business. The only thing under that agenda point is our meeting schedule and adjusting some of our meetings to not conflict with the Board of Supervisors' meetings.
So in the board pack is an adjusted draft for a proposed change, and it would just slide the Board of Trustees' meeting back for October and for March one week, and that was to not conflict, because we added those evening days into our schedule, that would not conflict with the Hanover Board of County Supervisors' meeting, so it would just shift them back one week.
Okay, so they would still stay at 6:00 p.m. This will affect the meeting for next month, Wednesday, October 15, 6:00 p.m. at the Montpelier branch, and then the meeting in March that we also have scheduled in the evening at 6:00 at the Atlee branch would move to Wednesday, March 18. Is there any discussion about that? I can have a motion to approve this amended schedule of meetings?
So moved. Thank you, Barb. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Rudy. All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? I see none this new meeting schedule has passed. Thank you. All right, we move on to new business. Quite a few things on our new business schedule, and the first one is monthly reports. I will hand that over back.
Okay, so as I mentioned, this is, this is a proposed template that I shared with the library leadership team at our meeting earlier this month. This would, going forward, replace what has been the director's commentary for some time. Some of the things that we're going to talk about is the expectations going forward for the branch managers and the division chiefs. There are the branch highlights, where we will have kind of a narrative and visual story of what's taken place during those months. It'll better represent what is actually happening in our branch versus, right now, it's kind of more a few lines that we put in the director's report. So this is to give a more full picture of all the exciting, wonderful things that are happening in our branches, including some visual representation as well. One of the things you saw in this month is that are those photographs from a handful of the branches to showcase the new things they have going on, the programs, the citizens and the patrons interacting with the staff. Going forward, some of the metrics that we'll highlight in this is we'll talk about overall visits for those branches, the overall circulation, so the things that are moving out of the building, the physical collection, not the digital, program attendance, new library cards, computer sessions, and one of the things we're working on getting ready is the Wi-Fi sessions. Those are all metrics that we are currently reporting to the state and to the board, but these are going to be kind of highlighted metrics that I want the board and the public to be able to see, because it's a really good representation of how busy our branches are, what's actually happening in them. And then we're going to do a bit of just, it's kind of a visual representation of each branch. As they report what's happening, we will see changes over month, over month, and year over year, so that way we can better see trend lines inside of the monthly reports. So that way, it's not just a static number that's being represented, it's showing us the trends of what's happening when it comes to patron visits and circulation and program attendance and these other metrics. So that's, it's an exciting change, and it'll allow us to better understand in a more simplified way kind of what is happening inside each individual branch. Each individual branch is going to do this monthly report, so this first page I showed you is going to be done by the branch manager, and then we will compile all systems data on a different sheet, which will kind of allow us to see side-by-side. Not that there's necessarily a competition, that's not the point, but it's to kind of show us an interesting metric that has a lot of value from not only the board, but the administration perspective as well. So, starting in September, for the next month's meeting, we will begin using this template. This is not something that, we may change this over time, as we get in and say we want to add new metrics, we're definitely going to look at those. So this is going to be a bit of trial and error. We're not married to this idea. I took some feedback from the branch managers and already made a few tweaks on this, and those kind of things will continue to happen. So this will begin for the next month's board meeting, you'll begin seeing these things. These will also be posted, of course, for the public to see as well when they're in. Any questions or thoughts on monthly reports?
So will this replace the director's report as well as the circulation report?
Largely, yes.
Okay.
The divisions, so collection strategies, administration, systems, is going to continue to do something like what we currently have, like, for example, the director's office doesn't have photos of awesome programs going on. So ours is going to be a little different than this. But this is more, because the branch is the heart and soul of what we are, this is kind of to better highlight what's going on in the branches. Yeah.
Zach?
Yes?
I didn't see in the previous slide, prior year-to-date, is that something that you're going to be adding to that column for prior year-to-date? You've got year-to-date, or is it something I can't see up there?
So you're going to see, you're going to see right here percent change, and so that's going to be change month over month, so comparing the previous, so for example, if we're looking at September's numbers, I want to look at last September's numbers.
Got you.
So that's how that's going to be equated effectively.
That's good.
Yeah. Month over month isn't the perfect, or excuse me, month over month is a good way to look at library statistics, because we have such variation throughout the year. You take those summer reading times where we are just busy, as you can be, and then, starting in September, we kind of have that fall slide down outside of summer. So for me, looking at the previous August for the current August is the way we'll be using these.
Okay. I have a quick question.
Yes?
Under program attendance, is that an umbrella term for anything like movies, performers, whatever?
Any program that the library is hosting, and it could be youth services, it could be adult, it could be miscellaneous, is going to go in one number. Yeah. We still keep statistics like the children's programming, so we keep statistics on those, but this is, for me, and I'm, you know, it's one of those things where a lot of our branches are heavy on one side or the other, so to showcase like youth services, which is the majority of most of our branch's programming, and then adult, it kind of creates an impression that I don't really want to create in these monthly reports, so I'm just doing the holistic top-line number.
But you hold on to all the?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay. Because it'd be good to have the difference between attendance and educational program versus maybe a film, which films can be educational, but.
Sure.
It'd be good to have all those stored.
Evan, I might suggest, based on what Evan's request is here, that there might be a sub-link to, in this case, programs, and when you click on that, it lists out all the programs. In other words, let's say there were 210 programs, you know, you click on that link, and it shows you all the programs and its location.
Okay.
To, because you know you're going to have that question. In fact, here it is in interest, and the public may want to know, well, that's great, but what kind of programs are we talking about?
Sure.
And so if you just provided a list, then we can always drill down further as to what does this mean, what was that presentation that says this, what does it really mean? But at least you have already answered the question that Evan just posited, and that is, we had 200, what were they? And just to give an overview, just a list of the name would be very helpful.
Okay.
And we don't necessarily need it included here, but just that we can have.
Sure.
You know, ready access to it.
Understood.
Are we still going to have the branch reports with the little stories and the pictures?
So that will be, let me scroll up here so you can see it. I renamed it branch highlights, so it's going to include.
Oh, and that area is going to be.
Yes, so right here, this is actually editable, so you'll actually have a similar narrative to what we have here.
Okay, we'll still get the stories and the pictures.
And the pictures, yes, yeah.
And then if there's any concerns in the buildings and stuff, where would that go?
That'll be in here as well.
Okay.
Yeah. The way we do facilities updates are going to be a little different going forward, because at least for some period of. because, at least for some period of time, with the deferred maintenance that we will talk about in some of our branches, I'm going to begin being more hands-on with making sure that our partners are helping us fix those problems. So we're going to be managing that a little differently going forward. But yeah, good question.
And just the Wi-Fi sessions, is that whenever anybody logs into the Wi-Fi network?
Yes. In fact, let's see, do we have one in here? No, we do not. We actually, oh, there's one right there, so behind you guys. We actually bought these fairly recently, and we're trying, these are supposed to be able to keep and track the stats for Wi-Fi usage. So when you come into this building and you're using us as a Wi-Fi location, we can tell and we can keep statistics with that. I have the systems engineer looking how to get that activated so that we can have that data. And for me, it's important to have it not just system-wide but also branch-specific because that tells us a lot about the demographic needs in a branch. So if we have one branch that's very heavy on Wi-Fi usage, it allows us to potentially do different things at that branch based on that knowledge of need. So.
And is there any spot in this for like community feedback? If there's concerns about something or if something was positive, is there any spots where you're going to be putting that other than the branch highlights?
So on the website, and I encourage, and they've already been doing it, using the director's, at director email, so that goes straight to me. There is going to be some community outreach starting in October. Once I'm done with meeting all of the PRL staff members, I'm going to begin doing public just introductions. I'm also going to reach out to the Board of County Supervisors as well as some other leaders in the community as well as community organizations. So that outreach is going to begin later in October and November. So definitely soliciting feedback on this, how the public, you know, there's definitely room for that. There's not a formal process with this, but of course, there's always the, you know, contact information that I have available and, you know, and even some of the citizens here today.
Well, I just want to know what people are saying, if we're getting positive responses about things, if we're getting negative response about things, and if that's something we need to be aware of.
Yeah. Well, and part of this change is to make it more patron-friendly and user-friendly, really highlighting those key statistics as well as creating a better visual representation of what happens in our library. I mean, I've worked in libraries a long time, and a Word document with a few lines is not the perfect representation from my professional standpoint. So this allows us to better showcase what our branches are doing because they're doing all these wonderful programs, and right now, we're not highlighting it like we could.
Right.
And so this is to kind of help us build up that muscle of highlighting, promoting what we're doing, and then showcasing the actual real, the real metrics for it.
Zach, I just want to say, I think the presentation of the statistics and the graphic representation that you have here is superior to what we've been doing because there's so much information, and it's like we're doing a storybook. And most people are very busy, and they want to get right to the point. And your points here are very telling, and they get right to the heartbeat of what's going on in our operations, which he's doing a great job on that. But you're telling the story, his story of what he's seen, what the traffic is. And then, for the people who love the graphics, the pictures, there's a section for that as well.
Yeah, absolutely.
That really gives it a life to its own, that these are real people, these are real families and children.
Yeah.
And I think it's great.
Yeah.
Good job.
Yep, thank you for taking the initiative to rework that. Any other questions? All right, let us move on to the next point, which is PRL staffing.
Okay, so it was a bit of a conversation, and I'll give some backstory for the folks that are listening on YouTube or the citizens that may not have heard last session. One of the things I mentioned when I first came in is our Pamunkey Regional Library staff roster had been not updated for a while. It was difficult for me to assess, coming in brand-new, where our vacancies were, where our staffing was, how we were staffed, because every, all the data we had was from several years ago. It just hadn't been updated. So as I began updating things, I began looking at things like, where are our vacancies? What positions are keep coming up? I was learning more about the organizational structure of the library. And some of the things I discovered was, we have a lot of staff members that are here and then gone fairly quickly. Part of the way that we hire historically has been, we hire, 83% of our staff are currently part-time. The rest are full-time. In my professional experience, having been a leader in five different library systems around the country, that is very high. Usually, it's more in the 50/50 range for libraries. So seeing 83% of our staff were part-time, and a lot of them were very part-time, as in, we have eight-hour positions, we have 13-hour positions, we have 14-hour positions, we have 16-hour positions, we have 19-hour positions. It is very, very difficult to recruit and to retain a large portion of the population with that kind of job. And in libraries, for me, one of my frustrations in kind of looking at this and learning about it is we have long said in the library profession that we want to hire a diverse workforce. And yet, what we're doing when we hire a 14-hour position is we're saying, we're sorry, we cannot take the majority of the population because they're not able to support themselves on a 14-hour job. So that is kind of the vantage point I came at this from. When I began digging in, and I'll show you two pieces here. This is just kind of a visual representation. So I looked at 2024 and 2025 data for a couple reasons. I did not want to look, I kind of looked back at old numbers, but because of the distortions of the COVID era, I removed all those years. So really, we're looking at the 2024 year and the 2025 year through the month of August. So basically, what I did is kind of took a turnover rate percentage line and kind of laid it out for you. So the gold, if you're looking at this at home, is the representation for fiscal '24, and then '25 is rated in the blue. So the next slide, I'm going to show you just some comparisons, and then I'm going to talk to you about what I'm doing about these things. So, these are some different industries, so professional services, tech, entertainment, hospitality, and retail. This data is from the Bureau of Labor Statistics, and this shows you the percentage turnover rate for these industries. Hospitality includes things like food service. Retail includes things like your retail shops and stores. What you're seeing consistently across these lines is we're between 11% and 13% turnover rate in those specific industries. What you will see here, the gold is fiscal '25 year-to-date in August. The green is the 2024 turnover rate. So PRL has a turnover rate that is twice as high as retail, including food service and hospitality. That is a, that is something that is not a good indictment of how we've been doing things. It means that we have a very difficult time keeping and retaining people. And I've met with, and I'll talk a little bit more about this. So the last, I've been here just over a month. The last month, I've met with over 2/3 of all PRL staff. And I've been talking to them about some of the things that I've been looking to change when it comes to this right here. A bunch of our team wants more hours. There are a lot of people in the point in their career where they're interested in working with us longer, but they do not feel like they have the trajectory or the opportunity here currently. So, a couple of the things that I've made changes with, I've talked to the library leadership team about these changes to make sure that we can administer them going forward. Going forward, we're going to have what we call a hiring pause. This is for two reasons. I met with Hanover County's HR department last week. We are going to be integrating into their NeoGov hiring process. The Pamunkey Regional Jail also participates in this. So some of the things over the next two months I'm going to be working on them getting is I'm going to be updating all of our classification and compensation documents so that we can integrate into NeoGov effectively. The proposed launch for that is the 1st of January. So we have a couple positions that will be in limbo until then, and they will be my beta testers on the new hiring process where we're going to update. And I talked a little bit about, and I won't rehash it entirely this time, but we talked about, last time, a little bit about the hiring process. It's pretty antiquated. You know, you can hand a patron a piece of paper and they can fill it out, and then we can scan it in, or they can email it in, and it's a time-consuming, antiquated process. So we're working on updating that. The other thing that I've made a change of is going forward, both previous to me, a part-timer was never allowed to go over 20 hours. That was a very firm rule. The hours that a staff member was assigned was pretty much set. So what I've told our staff to do during this hiring pause is, when there is a vacancy in their branch, to take those available hours and give them to their current staff members. And that will allow those team members who want additional hours to begin raising their time in the branch. So for example, if a 16-hour employee was to retire, was to leave for whatever reason, we would take that 16-hour position, the branch manager would do this, and then maybe they give four to one person, four to one person, and we begin lifting everybody up, those people who want it. Just to be clear, this will not affect staff members who are happy with their current weekly schedule. So if we have a staff member that is very happy with their 16 hours a week, as an example, we are not going to force them to change anything. This is about the large percentage of PRL staff that want more hours and previously could not get them. So we're going to begin, over time, adjusting. My goal is, over the next several years through attrition, is to standardize a part-time position at 20 hours. Then, when we hire for, in the future, we would have not only consistency with what we're hiring, but it would also be a more realistic hourly position than some of the large variety like an eight-hour position, a 14-hour position, a 16-hour position, as I mentioned. So, over time, my goal would be, through the budget requests, is to take part-time positions and combine them together to be more full-time. There are many branches, there are three branches that do not have more than one full-time person. To me, that's a difficult thing. It's also unusual in my personal experience. So over time, in future budget requests, we're going to begin asking our partners in the counties to help us with the budget implications of that. We're not actually paying more money for staff, the more money would be for the benefits that that would need to go to. So those are, that's my long-term plan. This here is not solved quickly. This here became an issue over many years, and it's going to take many years to kind of write it. But I wanted to follow up with, last time I mentioned this. So going forward, we will have the hiring pause, which will affect every position until January 1, which then will be integrated into NeoGov. And then after that, we're going to begin using those part-time vacancies to increase our part-time positions up in hours. And what I've told the management team is a part-time position is now, you can schedule them up to 29 hours on a recurring basis. And 29 hours is set by, you know, the Affordable Care Act back in the day. Basically standardized what the definition of a full-time employee was for an organization our size. And so as long as they work under 30 hours on a annual rolling basis, they would be not benefits-eligible. So that is my directive to the management team, is they can now assign people above that 20-hour threshold when they feel like it's necessary. The other thing this does is it empowers the branch managers to prioritize the things that their branch needs. So if they want to take a vacant position, and it had been a more public service desk position, and they want to expand a little bit for their programmers, they can give some additional hours so that we can increase programs or increase outreach from the branches, those type of things. So it's really about empowering the branches to do what they need to do as well. Any questions about that?
I just wanted to reaffirm what you're doing. I think you're heading in the right direction. And I think empowerment is very important, particularly for the library staff and the management there, which gives them not only the power and the ability to enhance their operations individually for each of the branches, but it gives them the authority to do that.
Yes.
And I appreciate your interaction with them and supporting them, and I'm sure it's been well-received.
I hope so.
You said your ultimate goal was to increase the number of full-time employees?
Yes.
Because I think?
So taking existing part-time vacancies and basically combining them together, so there would be, there would be no additional staffed hours. It would just take some of those part-time positions, and when they become available, combining them together to be full-time positions. So currently, we have three branches that only have one full-time staff member. So that's my first priority, is getting those branches, that second staff member. So there would be, in my world, there would be a manager, and then there would be a full-timer paraprofessional as well as the part-timers. So that's kind of my first thought of the highest priority, is making sure that every branch has at least two full-time staff members.
Can you share which branches those are that just have one full-time?
The Hanover Branch, the Montpelier Branch, and the? Thank you, Rockville.
All right, any other questions? All right, thank you, Zach, for that. Appreciate that. All right, next on the list is the Administrative Support Center, relocation options.
Okay. So just a little backstory for those that are listening later or for those in the audience that may not be aware. So currently, we are, the Administrative Support Center in 2021 consolidated staff from around Pamunkey Regional Library. We had offices in a handful of different places. And we consolidated into the Brady Hill Plaza here in town, just down the road, actually. And we signed a five-year lease for the space, so our lease comes up almost one year from today, towards the middle of October of 2026. Currently, we spend $108,000 a year in rent. This is actually coming out of our reserve fund, and for those that are not aware, it's effectively our emergency fund, pays for this annual rent every single year. There is a clause in the current contract where we could potentially extend the lease through Q1 of '27. So we have the potential of being there for another 15 months. So that's just a little backstory. So what is in the current Administrative Support Center? So we have two, parts of two different floors. Currently, the director's office, so myself and Jamie, the business operations chief, the program coordinators, we have two of those, and our systems engineer, an IT department are currently on the third floor. And then, we also have our administrative assistant there. We have a conference space. You see kind of just from this image here, we have a row of offices where the staff and I work. We have a conference room where we'll have some meetings, just as an example of some of the things in there. On our first floor, we have our collection strategies department. So collection strategies, for those that are not aware, they do all the physical processing. We also have courier services that run through here, so the folks that are transiting materials back and forth between the branches, this is where they are homed, as well as some other miscellaneous materials. We have program kits, we have outreach kits that we have available for the branches. So currently, that is stored on the first floor of the Brady Hill Plaza. So, we have 13 months before this lease expires. So what I'm presenting today are some potential options of where we will go once our lease is done. I talked to my partners in Hanover County about potential of finding us space inside of an existing Hanover County facility. To be transparent, I was not given good vibes on that likelihood, but it is a potential option. Second option, integrating back into the library branches. This would include, and I have a few options that I'll present to you later on in this presentation. There are a few branches that will end up taking the majority of the staff. There's also a handful of offices that staff would go back to where they were pre-consolidation in 2021. And I'll talk about that in a moment. Or, third option is a potential of combination of two options. We're going to talk more about the Hanover Branch in a few minutes with some maintenance issues. So I'm not going to belabor this option too much, but previous to our renovation, there is an attic space in the top floor of the administrative, in the, this was the old administrative space back in This was the old administrative space back in the day. There's also a conference room up there. We have some open space where all the staff in the Administrative Support Center had cubicles where they would sit. So this is option one. I did not include some of the photos for this one because we're going to talk about it a little bit. So the Ashland branch. I'll show a map momentarily of our new service area. Part of the reason of where we chose the Administrative Support Center's current location is because when we had the previous two counties that we did, it was a fairly central location for getting to King William, King and Queen. That's no longer the case. We are pretty far, and I'll demonstrate that in a moment. We're pretty far on the map. There are two branches that we're going to talk about here. And I'm going to kind of go over some details. The Ashland branch, here's a layout of the current branch. It's downtown. So just for those of you looking away, there's a large meeting room, the community room. There is the current youth services area. There's a bunch of the ref... This is actually no longer stacks. This is seating area. We have little study carols set aside for folks to be able to utilize the space for studying. This is some additional computer access, as well as display and seating in here. So this has changed a little bit from this old blueprint. This is more materials, so stacks of books. And then there is seating area adjacent to this space. There's also a conference room here, as well as some additional seating space. So option two, the Ashland branch, in my personal opinion, needs a renovation. It hasn't probably been touched in a long time. A lot of its furniture is out of date and pretty antiquated. They don't have a lot of modern things that a lot of libraries do. So for example, they have one large conference room that's available for the public. I think they need more than that. They need new furniture. A lot of this stuff, according to the branch manager, has been there for many years. So it shows it's wear. It's definitely not advantageous necessarily for a modern library. A lot of the furniture that they have seated around here is pretty uncomfortable. It's not particularly patron-friendly. And there's a wish to update. So option two is to renovate a portion of the Ashland branch. This would accomplish two things. This would allow us to provide a much-needed renovation of this space. But it would also allow us to build in administrative offices somewhere in what is currently the publicly accessible spaces. Because of the inefficient furniture that we currently have in this branch, we could actually take about 9% of the square footage, put all of the administrative offices in this space, and then we could, with some new shelving purchases, some new furniture purchases, we could actually increase the number of patrons seating and tables that are currently available. There's also the potential option with Ashland. I was just made aware yesterday by a citizen that basically the town of Ashland has a property that's right adjacent to this. I have not looked into that option. Building on would probably cost a little more than, you know, renovating a space. But there's always the potential. So that is...
I have a quick question.
Yes.
So in this plan, does it make space for down the road, if we were to go with this option? For down the road, the option of maybe, okay, we don't go after that. That's space that's connected. You just mentioned, a citizen made you aware of a space connected to the building. If we were to do this, could we then pursue that in the future? Or does everything have to be kind of decided right then?
Well, I'll just say this. We're kind of, to some degree, hamstrung by time because of the expiration of the lease. So it does not need... Nothing needs to be decided today. But we can't wait forever just because of the lease expiration. If we end up building sticks up, the reality is that it's probably going to be more than a 13-month project. Now, I can't promise that. But in my professional experience dealing with facilities for a very long time, it's probably going to take longer than that. Especially if we build... One of the options that the branch manager mentioned to me is the potential, and I've not investigated this at all, but it is a possibility, is adding in some type of second floor to a portion of this building. This building is fairly landlocked. So there's not really a good opportunity to build sideways. That's not really... Because the parking is so limited in the town, it's not really an opportunity to build out, building up potentially. But that complicates the length of time and the complexity of the project if we were going to build on like that type of thing. These are a couple pictures of the space that I mentioned before. You'll see here, these large tables are where I would envision the administrative offices going. So about nine square foot of the public space. We would not need to build in things like conference rooms. And during this renovation of this space, and I'll go back just a moment, we would add in some additional wish list items that the branch, because we're already renovating the space. We would refresh the entire building. We would build in some additional study rooms, meeting rooms. There's a big demand for that in libraries all over PRL's service area, but really everywhere. So we would use this opportunity of kind of renovating this space to kind of add in some of the wish list items that the Ashland folks have, as well as updating all the furniture, the shelving as well.
How often is that space used?
Which space?
The space you're trying to convert into.
It is used. It is used.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah. One of the things I did talk to the staff about is... I'll go back to your picture. Because I think this is... We're fighting human nature to some degree. You will oftentimes have one person sitting at this big table. And so that's why when I mentioned the having some diverse furniture in here post-renovation would be a really smart strategy because we could have the folks continue to use some large tables for those groups that are larger that are coming in. But also, a lot of folks just want to come in and sit by themselves. And so what happens now, to some degree, is one patron will take over a large chunk of that table. And then it's not really available for other patrons to use. So it's kind of...
So what I'm asking is, is there any point in time where that space is fully stocked with people? Or is it just more of a, I have a ones and twos here and there?
I don't know.
Okay.
I would assume, though, it's probably there are periods of time where it is very busy.
Okay.
And then people are all sitting together in that space. That would be my guess, but I'm confident that I'm right.
And so your different furniture, it would be more flexible where seating arrangements, where they could either combine it to make a larger table in the area they need it, or they could spread it apart?
So let me, just going back to the blueprint for a moment here. This currently, my idea is taking over this portion here for the administrative offices. Taking this area, which is currently like, basically like seating, like wooden carols that people can go into, this would turn into publicly available so patrons could use this for group study rooms. Then, we would take some of this area, like right now, they have a large desk that's sitting there. It's an old reference desk, and it's just never been moved by the maintenance department. They use it as a puzzle table. So we would buy them a new puzzle table and begin having some different seating choices in this area, as well as around the branches. So this would kind of include a refresh of the majority of their space.
I just have to say, in my first glance at this, this is the first time I've seen or heard about this. I am not in favor of this idea at all. I think that public space in public libraries is going to... The need is going to increase as people yearn for a gathering spot. And I think that in Goachland, it's very much... Goachland Library is very much a gathering spot for people to have meetings and just gather.
Yep.
I think that there, with COVID and such, there is much bigger availability of commercial space. I just, I feel like there is money set aside from donations that I know Ashland has. I'm in favor of a refresh. I think that's a wonderful idea. But I don't think this is the way to do, just me personally speaking in my first glance at this.
Sure.
I like the idea of casting a wider net. I have to believe there's commercial space out there that would work for PRL somewhere located between Goachland and Hanover somewhere. It may take a lot longer to find it, but my gut feeling tells me that I think the public would not like this. And I think that I'd love to see the spaces refreshed, as you said, and make it more inviting for the public who already is using it. And if somebody needs a table to go sit at by themselves in that space, I think that's a valuable use of that space.
Sure.
I have a feeling that we're kind of cramming staff into this spot. And I like the idea of being close to the libraries. I don't know, and I don't have experience. I've never seen an admin in a library before. So maybe this is just foreign to me. But it doesn't sit right with me. I think that involves a lot of building. We're not in the business of building. We're in the business of, you know, effective library system in use. And I just think the public would go for this idea. And I would have to agree with them on this.
Yeah, yeah.
So I...
Oh, sorry.
I was just gonna, have you had a chance to talk to anybody in Goachland about some of the, you know, some of the spaces that would be closer to the Hanover-Gochland line, not West End or something like that? But the possibility of there being some spaces that Goachland might help provide?
I was clued in, and I haven't talked to the county administrator yet, but I was clued in that there's a school just down the road from the Goachland branch that they're trying to find a purpose for. It's a big space. I actually drove around it a couple weeks ago when I was out there with you all for the Friends meeting. It's far more than we would need. And I don't know what the county's opinion is on wanting to keep the space because, of course, then if we moved into it, it would be owned by them. So I've not talked to Goachland directly about it. I have talked to several people in Hanover about trying to find us a potential location. Part of my... With this, I did not explore additional leased options. Now, the board is welcome... If that's what you guys want to do, I will begin that. The reason I didn't is because, at least with our current budget, coming out of the reserve fund, so coming out of our emergency fund every year to pay rent on a facility is not a sustainable strategy, in my professional opinion. Now, that doesn't mean we can't do it for some length of time. We're going to be doing it for the next year already. So from my standpoint, and I kind of had this listed a little earlier, and this was, in my brain, this is the order of hierarchy. Now, secure new space from our county partners. Finding office space that currently exists that is underutilized or not utilized, that we could move the Administrative Support Center into, probably option one. However, relying on the county to get us that in a reasonable amount of time, it's out of our hands. So we don't control any of that. Which is why option two and option three are within our control. Option one is not. Not that it's off the table. That would be, you know, I'm agnostic on everything I'm presenting to you. I don't have a personal view in which we should do. But if I was telling you which one would be easiest for the patrons, the staff, everybody involved, it would be that. It would be that.
Zach?
Yes.
If I may. One of the things that you mentioned early on is you talked about how it was before you moved into the centralized space.
Yes.
You didn't address that. But from your experience from working in various systems, where the operational staff, the administrative staff, senior management, that group was actually decentralized and integrated into the building, the footprints of the libraries. Let's say we had plenty of space. And why is that preferred versus putting you out in an office building that's detached, in my view, from the actual operations, the pulse?
Yes.
The public?
Yes.
You know, so, you know, you put the operations manager out there, and he's working online. And he really needs, and he's gone most of the time out of his office because he's got to be in the operations, doing what he does.
Yeah.
And you're the one that, you know, in my mind at some point, needs to spend time with your counterparts, the senior managers, the librarians, integrating and implementing all the great things you've talked about today. Tell us why it's preferable if we had unlimited space in the, you know, or available space, however you want to view it, in the libraries themselves?
So I'll tell you just historically, it is very common for there to be a director's office-type function attached to or inside of a branch. In fact, where I came in Prince William County, that is exactly what we did. We were attached to the main branch of the library. So that allowed administration to basically see what was happening in the branch. The reality, so in talking to all of these staff members that I've been talking to over the last month, I've met with two-thirds of PRL's entire team. And I hear consistent themes. And we're going to talk about that a little bit. But one thing I've heard from a ton of staff is this is the first time they've ever talked to a library director before. This is the first time they've ever sat down with anyone from administration, ever. And for me personally, this is my personal viewpoint, is the higher you go in any organization, the more detached from the reality on the ground you are. And that's just inherent in all of our jobs as leaders. And so for me, there is value being inside of a branch because you get to see every day the great things that the branches are doing. You get to walk past and see the programs. You get to hear the conversations with the public. You get to interact with a way, in a way, that you do not get to do like where we are now, where we're isolated, we're on the third floor, no one knows we're there. And unless we make the effort, which is something that I've told the administration team that we're going to begin doing a lot more of, but we're isolated from what actually happens. So the advantage of integrating into a branch is the fact that we can be where the heartbeat of the library is. We can see it, we can feel it, we can be there. So that has value from my perspective because it helps create that lessening of that gap in being detached from the reality on the ground. The, I'll mention this briefly because we're going to talk about this more in a moment. The Hanover branch is a historic building. Any renovation that needs to be done to that space, the space currently is not adequate for moving us back into. There's also some maintenance issues with that building, which we'll discuss in more depth in a few minutes. I, at this time, do not want to move anyone into that space before the work is remediated that needs done. So to me, moving back into the Hanover branch is not a high priority of mine for a permanent solution. It may be a temporary solution if there's, you know, a lease change and we're working on renovating. Right now, for example, it's upstairs, the rows of small cubicles that everyone would sit in. So we have all these department heads sitting in open cubicles. So you can't have, you would have the deputy director sitting, having a conversation that's confidential with their staff member. They don't have an office. So they can't do the administrative things that they need to do, as an example, you know? So there are a lot of challenges with going back to this space. So we'll talk more about that.
And I think that if we were to do the moving, decentralizing of things, that would be also a concern is if you're going to be in one of the libraries and you don't have sufficient space to have those conversations like that. So my question for you is, because philosophically, I'm very partial towards the idea of being, having the solution to a problem, being as close to the problem as possible. So I agree with you on that. How confident are you, in your experience, that the administrative facets of Pamunkey Regional are going to be able to work together in the way that they should efficiently while they are... are going to be able to work together in the way that they should efficiently while they are out in these individual areas?
If it's done selectively, we can minimize the impact on that. And I'll give you two examples of what I'm thinking about this potential change. Our collection strategies department, which is currently on the first floor of the administrative support center, it needs a place for receiving large shipments. So it needs like a loading dock. Currently, we do not have that. It needs a first-floor location. We do have that, but we don't have, we don't have a good option for that. So the administrative team that I would think of relocating into one of the branches currently is the director, the deputy director, the finance chief, the administrative supports, the admin, and then potentially one other position if it's approved by the board in the future. So it would be a core piece. We would have the information technology staff that currently spend most of their days out of the space anyway. They're in the building triaging challenges as they come up. So they're basically out of the space anyway. They have a, a large server room inside of this building here that we're working on cleaning out and preparing that space so that they would move back into that space. There's also a couple other miscellaneous staff members that I mentioned earlier, like the program coordinators. So those, those positions would be set somewhere else. We do have, and I'll, I'll go on because we do have one more potential option.
Can I just say something quick, Zach, before you go on?
Yes, absolutely.
For some people, this might seem a little bit out of the blue to start talking about administrative relocation, but this is something that the board asked Zach to consider. And the reason for that is what he mentioned earlier, is that when this lease was started in 2021, that the lease cost was not included in our operational budget, which means it is coming out of our reserve fund every year. And there are a lot of concerns about doing that because we should really be able to cover our operational expenses with what we are receiving in income. We should not be going to our reserve fund for an operational expense. So that's what we're trying, the salute, the problem that we're trying to solve with this. And so I would just, since we asked Zach to do this, I would just give him the opportunity to kind of present all the options before the board weighs in. And I don't think, we're not gonna make a decision today, obviously. There's more input that needs to be done, but this is kind of his first stab at it. So we appreciate, that's, it's a big job to do, so we appreciate that. But just to give a little bit of background from where this is coming from and, yeah.
Thank you. The last, the last option that I'll present is the Atlee branch. Currently, the Atlee branch is, is one of our newer branches. It has two floors. So this is a little hard to see what's going on, but I'm gonna kind of describe some of it for you. This here is the stairwell as you walk in up to the second floor. There's conference space. This is, this is, this is where I would look to, as you walk up the stairs, then you have this open space here. You have the children's space here. You have the computer lab that's on the second floor up here. You have what's called the Creative Commons, which is kind of a program room, meeting room, miscellaneous. And then you have a staff office right here on the floor, and then you have two available study rooms. You also have the large Crenshaw room over here that's adjacent, so you walk around. This space also has, in this area, in this area particularly, it has a lot of publicly available seating. So for this space, I'm gonna give you another image here from the other blueprint, just to kind of zoom in here. So my, my idea for this space, once again, and, and both the Ashland branch and the Atlee branch would allow us to not have to put into any renovation a bunch of things that we currently have. We currently have a conference room space at the administrative support center. We wouldn't need that. We wouldn't need a staff space like a lunchroom because we already have it in the building. So we would be able to fit into a smaller footprint because of the lessening of some of those needs. Right now, the Atlee branch has two computer labs, one on the first floor, one on the second floor. In my conversations with the staff there and my observations over the last many days being there, the second-floor computer lab is underutilized. Most staff would tell you that, generally speaking, there's only a handful of people in there at any given time. I've asked why that is. There's different theories. Most of the theories revolve around people not wanting to come up the stairs or knowing that it's even up there. Because if you are a patron coming into the first floor of the library and you're an adult, the first, the, the second floor is a large section here for the kiddos area, and then the teen area. So you're not necessarily coming up here to find your collection. So there's, there's the feeling with staff that maybe people don't know it's there. The, the space here would be, or the, the proposal here would be to take over the existing computer room and build in administrative offices into that space. They have the existing computer lab on the first floor. We would work to find out the staff's feelings on how many computers they think they need, but they told me that they never have all, all of them used. So it's, it's, it's the potential of taking an underutilized space, not a not utilized space, an underutilized space and repurposing it. This, this proposal too would be fairly low impact on the branch because this room is already an enclosed room. So we could close the doors if there was any renovation. It would be fairly low impact. There would be no operational adjustments that would be needed for this small renovation. The Atlee, and this is just another picture of the space that I'm talking about. So as you walk up the stairs into the second-floor area, this space right here is the computer lab space that I would be, I would be talking about repurposing for administrative support. Now, this would, this branch also includes some meeting space. This currently is a conference room in the staff area. This currently is a workroom where the janitorial staff keeps supplies. And this is currently a room that's used by the Friends of the Atlee for book storage. Those three offices could be repurposed for administrative staff as well.
Now, if you were to convert the computer room, what would you do with all the equipment that is in there? How would you repurpose that?
Probably send it to the branches that are in desperate need of some refreshes. Some of the branches have told me that the public available computers are more than 10 years old. So we're working at updating those, and that's a whole nother problem. But, but we would, we would use them somewhere else because they're, they're new per.
Yeah.
They're not, they're not new. They, they are, I believe they're new to the renovation. So they would be about four years old.
And again, to go back into a library, that's a cost-saving expense.
Well, I mean, you're, you're talking about the reserve fund that we wouldn't need to pull out of every year. So we would save that money. It would also give us the ability to, you know, like, like I mentioned, you know, just be in a building. It would also mean that we have the accessibility to things that we currently have, like a meeting room, like a staff room. So there's a lot of potential advantages and synergies that can be done by integrating us into a place like Atlee. Once again, there's not really a way to build onto that building because of the way we're landlocked there. So this is, this is a way to kind of do it. And this would, of the three options, in my personal opinion, this would probably be the cheapest. We would need to redo, and, and the reason I included this staff area picture here, a lot of the storage needs of this branch would definitely need to be taken into consideration with any of us repurposing their space. So we would probably end up doing some level of work on their back staff area to give them more staff space, to give them more storage space, to kind of compensate for what we would end up taking.
And now would Ashland take a backseat to the refresh that they need if we don't choose to go that route?
Well, Ashland does have some funds.
Okay.
It's not gonna be enough. I mean, they have less than $300,000 set aside. That's enough to probably replace a portion of the furniture. That would not replace shelving. That would not add community rooms. However, does it, does it mean it can't be done?
Yeah. How much of the staff can fit in this spot?
Okay, so, so let me, let me answer kind of a big question. So with this space here, with the, if we repurposed the computer lab, we could add in the five staff members that I would envision without any issue in that space, building in offices. We would kind of have basically offices along the sides, along the sides, and then a hall here. So we'd be able to build in five staff members' offices here. And then we would probably, just, just thinking out loud, probably put the two program coordinators into the, into, into the back office area. The one thing that this plan is not accounting for is the difficulty with the collection strategies department because of their need for the ability to receive deliveries. So they're, they're going to be a challenge.
But the Ashland location won't have that challenge?
Well, if we were to do a renovation, maybe we could plan for it. But honestly, I don't expect to move them to the Ashland branch because then you'd take up twice as much space as, so, so my, my view, if we were to use the Ashland branch, it would just be the director, the deputy director, the finance chief, and then the admin, and that, that would be it there. I would not move the collection strategies because then you are talking about taking over a massive portion of that building.
Well, this one makes a little more sense to me in that by the staff's own assessment, it's a very underused space.
They, they didn't use those words. That's my editorializing it.
Okay, but that, that computer lab and that the lab on the first floor?
Yes.
Is never full.
Yes. And, and we could take some of these units and move them down. The other advantage too is I've been hearing, like, there's some patrons that have to go to one location because the, like, for example, the color printer only exists in one spot. So if you're a patron who wants to use a color printer the way it's currently situated, you have to use this computer lab because there's not one available up here. So there's these quirky things that are already in existence. But we could, we could increase the number downstairs too to accommodate.
And correct me if I'm wrong, but the other spaces, the janitorial closet, the staff space, and the storage?
Yeah.
That's not public used?
Correct. That is, that is in the staff.
So it's not taken away from the public?
Correct.
So we would be pulling computers out of a lab that is, in your terms, paraphrasing, underused?
Yes.
Moving them some downstairs, sending others out in a, to much-needed spaces and converting that space. So that, to me, is not really affecting the public?
I mean.
From what I can see, from what I can see here.
This is, to me, the easiest option and the least impactful option. Obviously, you will have, you will have public space affected by this in the sense that you're taking something out and kind of removing it. But the reality is too, they have two.
They have two, and the one downstairs is never fully used, so.
And the downside of the one downstairs though, that you, you may hear pushback on, is it's quieter up here. This is open. So right behind this wall here, there's the computer labs. You can't really see it from this image, but it's open. So the reason that I've been told that there's a handful of folks that like utilizing this space is it's quieter.
Well, I mean, that's what headphones are for.
Sure.
You know, I, I work with headphones on all the time.
Really? My concern for the Atlee is that I know the teens section's up there. Do the teens utilize that computer lab because it's near their, I guess, area?
Not that I'm aware.
Okay.
No. And, and, and they do have, they do have plenty of computers. I mean, we, we could consider adding in additional computers, maybe in the teen space. We'd need to work through the challenges of that, but I mean, that's an option.
That's all I think, yeah.
That's an option. If, if that was a concern, we could potentially accommodate for that. They do have some computers in the kids' area currently.
Yeah, they do, yes.
Yeah. So I mean, that, that, there is some there, but, you know, teenagers don't want to necessarily go hang out with little kids, in my experience. So, you know, there is that.
That's, that's why my concern would be, maybe the teenagers do utilize that because it's near their section. It's, it's closed off, so they're not being disruptive, you know. It's something to think about.
Yeah.
Well, in my view, just listening to the, the comments and the great feedback from the board members, and Christie's notation of, you were originally tasked with this because we're pulling an operational expense out of an emergency fund, which was never intended and should not be used for operational purposes, especially paying rent. This seems like this is a, well, you're not gonna please everybody with this solution, but it, it seems to fit the need the best. And it is centrally located, notwithstanding the collection issue, getting that department squared away. But this solves the $188,000 or so that we're pulling out of the emergency. It's, it solves the issue and, as Barbara indicated, at the, the least painful solution or least impact to the, negative impact to the public?
Sure.
As it's been viewed here.
Yep.
I will say though that we still haven't solved the problem of the collection department.
Yeah.
We still need a location. So there is gonna be some expenditures there.
Well, and, you know, part of my, part of my beginning, just synopsis, combination of two options. The reality is, is the collection strategies department may need to extend that lease in their current location on the first floor of the Brandy Hill Plaza for some period of time. Because there are needs for that department that we do not have the facilities to accommodate currently.
Do we know the cost?
No.
Of just that space?
No.
Have, have we had any discussions about extension of lease, just like?
Not yet.
For a period of time?
Not yet.
Like, we would need another year?
No, not yet. Currently, in our current lease, we have that, that clause.
That's a few months.
That says we can, yeah, we can extend for a few additional months. So right now, the end of our, the end of our lease officially ends in 15 months, basically, if we, if we would pull the, pull the, the option to extend it. So we do have time, and from my vantage point, kind of what I'm basically looking for is which road do we want to go down to investigate further? Because all of this is just laying the table. And then, I think the reality is, I'll, I'll show you this real fast. Our current admin building is down here. Once again, when we had those two additional counties, this made a ton of sense. This is our current service area. Right here is the Ashland branch, pretty centrally located, Hanover branch. So this is Atlee. So it's not, it's not center, but it's, you know, a little bit. So my view is, we kind of pick a lane that we want to go down, and then we begin soliciting the staff feedback on what they need from us to do. We solicit, solicit the public's feedback to hear what they want. Particularly the, the, the Ashland branch, if we were to choose that option, because that one is gonna be much more dramatic than the Atlee, the Atlee renovation. We are gonna have to account for taking away some of the current staff space. We're gonna have to adjust. So we're gonna solicit feedback from the staff. Like, we're taking over these rooms from you. What do you need from us? So there is gonna be, there is gonna be some questions and answer time that is gonna be needed. And then, once we decide which option, we can then begin, begin to understand how much we're talking about spending to make the spaces what we need them to make.
Is there any way for you to come up with plans and maybe even some visuals on your plan for the Atlee branch and for the Ashland branch? So the public can see what you're saying?
Sure.
Because I, I know for me, I'm a very visual person, and sometimes it's hard to see what you're talking about when you say a refresh and how we're gonna take this but add this. You know what I'm saying?
So what I can do is reach out, and I'll reach out to my peers who've used library-focused architects. And I can begin having that conversation and have them draw up what, what we call concept designs. And basically, hypothetically, we're looking at these two options. What would it look like?
Yeah.
And so that way, we could have better visuals, because right now, you know, it's not, you know, it, it, we're showcasing the current space, but not the potential.
And I think the Ashland space is the one that's really hard to see how you would fully unite that and how they can, you know, get benefit from it as well.
Yeah, absolutely.
So I know you said that you spoke with Hanover County General Services about this?
Yes.
As far as trying to find locations that are already within the county's scope?
Yes.
I know Barb has suggested contacting Goochland. I know you said you heard something from an Ashland?
Citizen.
Citizen?
Yeah.
That there might be?
An available parcel right near the library.
Okay.
It's, it's less than a block away.
Is it worth contacting Ashland Town to see whether they have?
Yeah.
I mean, because they have their own.
If you guys, if you guys are all right with that, I'll, I'll reach out and, because apparently that parcel is owned by the town of Ashland. Now, that's what I was told. I don't, I don't know that, but that's what I was told, that the town actually owns what was an old dance studio that they leveled because the building was. was an old dance studio that they leveled because the building was demolished. So it's a vacant space with, I could throw a rock and hit the library, so it's very close.
There's no building on its side?
No, no. We'd have to build it. We'd have to build it.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, and the reality is, that is an option.
Could be...
But that's, a sticks-up build will be about four to five X, in my experience, of a renovation. Like, for example, an option, a potential, is adding a second floor to the Ashland branch. And I've been told that historically, that was discussed as a potential option for 20 years. There's been that, wouldn't it be nice if we could have a second story? And it was always not followed through because the cost is going to be pretty high to do that kind of thing.
Well, if you're building a separate building, then the cost is going to be high.
Absolutely.
But is there a way to maybe even move the offices into one of the libraries for a short period of time, so we're out of the admin building?
Yes.
While we're constructing the building?
Absolutely. Absolutely. And we can use, we can use offices, we would really have to be scattering everyone for that to work well. But for a temporary purpose, I have available offices in this building for the IT staff. I have available office in Atlee that can be repurposed for administration staff. I have available space upstairs in the Hanover branch that could still be used. I, I, you know, and I'm going to talk a little bit about the maintenance issues. I have concerns about that, but for a temporary purpose, it can be done. I also have an available office that if we were to decide to keep collection strategies on the first floor of the current space, when I move the IT staff over to this building where they historically were, I'll have available space for some of those third-floor folks to move down. So we could shuffle around things, even if it's on a more temporary basis. Yep.
When you talk about construction, which building is, once again, I don't think we're in the business of building, but would that include everybody? Collections, admin?
It could. It could. Depends on what option we go with. If you go with the parcel that's in Ashland, for example, it's fairly small. It's not, I mean, I don't know. I mean, I looked at the grassy area, and I don't know exactly where the property lines are, so I don't, I don't have more information on that. But it's fairly small.
Can I just interject? The town does not own that property.
Okay, thank you for correcting me. Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
So, it was what the misinformation that I was spreading was untrue for the citizen that told me that. So anyway, yeah.
Okay. All right. Yeah, I, yeah.
I have a question, Zach.
Yes.
So, I'm not sure where we're trending at this point, but I think the board needs to consider a direction to give you to pursue before we leave today. But let's say, for purposes of discussion, that the Atlee object would be the least intrusive, least-cost methodology to get everything except collections in one place, considering everything that was said today. You mentioned and shared on the map that Ashland was a very central location in terms of collection distribution. It might be worth looking for, and perhaps Fay could help us, guide us in a direction of a space, first-floor space for collections, to distribute their work out of the Ashland area, perhaps close to the library. It's not, you know, Ashland's not a big town, but there may be an old 7-Eleven or something, you know, like, that's been repurposed there in the past. And Fay may, Fay may have some ideas about that also. The point is, that may be another option outside of Atlee, which at this point, notwithstanding construction costs, which sounds interesting, but it doesn't sound viable, and we have a limited amount of time. And we need to solve our original problem, which is getting the money out of, you know, the reserve fund.
So I'm wondering if we could maybe ask Zach to, because I don't want Zach to invest a lot of time in something maybe that doesn't come about. So I'm wondering if we could get some more information for the next meeting with contacting Goochland and trying to see whether they have options, maybe circling back around to Hanover and asking them, maybe contacting some of our boards of supervisors as well, asking if they have ideas for ways that we could solve this problem. And then also contacting the company that we lease from, just to get a better idea. If we were to keep just the first-floor space, what are we looking at as far as rent for that area? And would there be the option to extend, rather than a five-year extension, would there be the option to extend, for example, for a year, to be able to give us a little bit more time to find some of those pieces of information out before we start designing a new...
Right. Well, my concern here is rent. We currently don't have a budget for rent. So what are we looking at that way? How much can we afford?
Madam Chair?
You mean for the circuit?
Yeah.
So, I was looking, this is something that I think may have changed since the historic way that the library is operated. The regional agreement that was approved by Goochland and Hanover just a few months ago has a provision that says, "Costs associated with regional administrative offices that are leased shall be borne by all jurisdictions as part of general operations of the library." So as I read that, there may need to be a discussion among the accounting folks, and it's always dangerous when lawyers do that. But as I read this, it should not be coming from the reserve fund.
Yeah.
So if that needs to be something that, and I'm just going to use it as a proportion, if it is five-sevenths goes to Hanover and two-sevenths goes to Goochland, I'm going to do rough lawyer math, which is always a tough thing, so out of $100,000, if that's roughly 70%, would go to Hanover, then I think the library should ask for $70,000 more in its general operating fund. So that way, it's the same amount, but it wouldn't be coming from the reserve fund because, as everybody's pointed out, that's an operation cost that shouldn't be coming out of the reserve fund. That's separate and apart from the overall discussion of what to do about long-term, but I think from an accounting and a budget standpoint, that may have been something that's changed because it has been clearly articulated in the regional agreement that it's a shared operational cost.
Okay. Thank you for drawing our attention to that.
Well, and that just clearly articulates Christie's earlier point, that we're looking for a solution for this purpose. It'd be, you know, whether we put everybody together or decentralize them, that's a great philosophical discussion, and we're working on that solution. But the, but the problem to be solved here is to move that operational money out of the reserve fund, which should be used for emergency purposes, disaster purposes, planned maintenance and so forth over a period of time, et cetera.
This may just give a little bit more flexibility for the library board in terms of, if the thought is to extend it for a year, you could, the library board might decide to extend the entire space for one year while you study this issue.
Yeah.
And clearly, it is your call, but that may, I don't know if we have the same amount of time pressure if the landlord is willing to do an overall one year if you're not drawing down any reserve fund. I mean, I realize you all are very conscientious of that reserve fund. It's been a heightened point of scrutiny, and for using it for something that clearly isn't the intent, isn't a short, medium, or long-term solution. So I just point that out, and it's certainly something, I'll, I'll reach out to the Hanover County folks to see how they have accounted for it in the county budget, but now's the perfect time to have those discussions because both Goochland and Hanover are starting their budget process.
Correct. I think one of the challenges that we're going to have is, as we'll see with the budget for the next fiscal year, we do have a bigger ask for both of our jurisdictions this year due to increasing health insurance costs and things like that. So adding an additional amount on that is going to be significant, so...
Yep.
Are there any thoughts about my suggestion with the way forward? No, makes perfect sense, I think. I'd like to get more information, more options, if there are any. Yeah.
Yeah, I'll, I'll reach out before the next meeting and talk in more detail and lay out the needs and dive into that to see if there's options potentially in some of our partners' locations.
Okay.
Chair, do we need to make a motion to continue this discussion for another month and bring Zach back with additional information?
We can, yes. Would you like to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that, as discussed, we'd like to direct Zach to come back with additional information as discussed for our next board meeting.
Okay. Thank you. Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Barb. All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Okay. Thank you, Zach, for all your work on that.
Of course. So the next thing on the agenda is to talk about the proposal for an outreach services department. So, at the very end of this, I'm going to ask for a motion from the board on the creation of an outreach services department. In doing some investigation, I'm not, I don't think I actually have to, but I want to make sure that the board kind of has that buy-in, so I'm going to do, I'm going to do that. And then I'm going to talk to you a little bit about the potential of what, what will go in it like a bookmobile. So, an outreach services department. So for those that don't know, we have our wonderful physical branches, and an outreach services department would expand our library services into those areas where we are underserving the population. So those areas, whether by geography, because of other limitations, they're not coming into the building. So through outreach, we would expand things like access to the collection, programming opportunities, community event-type participation. It would allow us to kind of better connect with our community partners and building those relationships all around. What is the purpose? Why do we need an outreach services department? So, the current Monkey Regional Library, the number of the population that we serve that has an active card is 23%. 23% is very low. The Virginia Library Association puts out information for the state of Virginia, which is at 58% of Virginians have an active library card. So we are half the state average, less than. The American Library Association puts out data saying that 66% of residents in the United States have an active library card. So what you see is PRL has between half and two-thirds the active registered users that is the norm. So outreach services would help us close that gap. How would we do that? My proposal is to add a variety of different services that would make the library more accessible to folks where they are. The creation of a bookmobile, which would visit schools, adult senior living facilities, public parks, and neighborhoods, just to name a few. This would be a mobile library on wheels where a patron could get every single service that they could get inside of the buildings, but they'd get it delivered to them. A lobby stop service. I'll show you pictures of this in a moment, but a lobby stop service could deliver to facilities like memory care facilities, nursing homes, senior centers, those folks that have transportation or physical limitations. A lobby stop service would deliver a browsing collection every single month to those specific facilities. I'll show you a couple, a couple more details on that in a few minutes. We could, we could partner with our local schools and daycares to bring the bookmobile to the facilities. That way, expanding our reach into the youth area, including with youth programming. When we're on-site, we could do storytimes just like we do in the library. So it allows us to not only expand access to books, but also allows us to access programming in a way that they may not be able to do. Community stops. The bookmobile would visit various areas of the community and provide recurring library service. So this would go into neighborhoods, into parks, into places around the community that are currently underserved by the library, and we would park the mobile library there on a recurring basis so that they have accept, they have access to the library service and collections just like anyone else. And then the last thing, community events. So this would allow us to kind of, in a very visible, big way, to do those things like holiday parades, summer festivals, back-to-school nights, night-out events, things like the Montpelier Day as an example. We could attend those, with those big events with the mobile library, not only to expand access to those folks, but also be very visible and present inside of the community and be a good partner. So, the first part of the proposal is a bookmobile. A bookmobile is a very physical asset that we could have. And the, and this was mentioned earlier, so I have run bookmobile services. There is not a one-size-fits-all for how this was. I was talking to some staff yesterday in some one-on-ones about the bookmobile services that used to exist. And the way it used to exist historically is not necessarily what we will do going forward. What was described to me by the staff that were knowledgeable of the era was, we would park, we would sit in a spot, a handful of people would come on. It was a fairly slow service. And my vision would be, we're going to go to places where we know there's demand. We're going to go to the senior living facilities, we're going to go to the schools. And I'll talk a little bit more about some numbers in a moment. But there could be up to 3,500 items on this vehicle at any given time. It would provide Wi-Fi and hotspot access while we're on-site, so that way, folks can utilize our Wi-Fi service. We can also provide mobile and printing technology services on the vehicle. We'll also provide programming opportunities from the vehicle itself. So my proposal would be to add the staff members that would be on the vehicle, one could be on the vehicle. It has an awning on the other side, which you can't see on this, but you'll be able to do like a little storytime while you're at an event. You can go into the school and provide the kiddos with a storytime, just like what they would get in the library. And we could also make the vehicle ADA accessible. So those folks that have physical limitations, where it would be difficult to get up into a step van, we can provide a ramp on this vehicle where it would allow access for somebody in a wheelchair, a walker, et cetera. This is a picture, this is a picture, don't look at that gentleman right there, but this is an idea of what it could look like inside of the bookmobile. So we would have browsing collections along the sides. You could also set up space for like magazines, movies, et cetera. You see, there's service desks which are available for printing services if patrons need it. We could have a printer onboard, circulation services, you see the book drop there. These vehicles are entirely customizable. So what you see here is not necessarily a representation of what we have to have. We can put literally anything we want in them. One of the thoughts I have, so this is, this is kind of the physical, physical inside, and I'll show you, right here, on a lot of bookmobiles, you have shelving that is mobile. And the purpose of that, and I'll show you in this next picture, just to give you a better idea. So this is us taking our services to a senior living facility. These folks do not necessarily leave their buildings because of transportation or other limiting factors. So we could take a collection from the bookmobile, wheel it inside, so that the patrons can have recurring, regular browsing collections every single month. So they'd be able to access our collection, they'd be able to put on holds, they'd be able to get access to new materials. One of the pieces of feedback, you know, Barb, we heard when we were in Goochland, talking about one of the facilities with the board of county supervisors, is, you know, the facility has a little library. And that's pretty common in a lot of these senior facilities. However, their definition of a library is very different than mine. They have some old donated books that have been there for years and years and years. They don't necessarily have access to the new stuff that we do, they don't have access to the awesome collection that we provide. So this would give them that ability. Community events. We'd be able to bring the beautiful bookmobile that we would have to those things where there's going to be a bunch of people. So we could be a visible force inside of the community, going to the holiday parades, going to the back-to-school nights, going to these community-oriented events. Not only would it allow us to be a very visible force in the community, but it would also allow us to provide access while we're there. So they could participate, you know, if we're in a parade and they have a little festival going on, we go through the parade, we park, and then we provide access to the mobile library while we're there. And then we could also do little crafts or whatever we want to do. This is allowing us to expand all of our services into those physical locations where we're not currently going. The other great opportunity for the bookmobile services is partnering with our schools and daycares. So we could have, we could have the schools come and attend if they wanted to come on the bookmobile and check materials out with the teacher. They could. Maybe they just want to get a storytime and see the library. There's options in every school we'll partner with will be a little different. And we are flexible with what we do and where we do it. So we would concentrate particularly heavily on those areas that are not physically, geographically close to the, to the physical libraries, would be kind of my view on, kind of the order of, the order of priority. As an example, so this is... As an example, so this is a map of our service area. So we have elementary schools in blue scattered around, we have senior centers and senior facilities in green, and we have red, our community parks. These are examples of where this mobile library could be going. I made up a basic, simple schedule. Don't nitpick the details, but you get the idea. So we could have, on Monday, we could have a Hanover Run Day, where we go to Ashland Elementary, maybe we see the kindergarten classes, an example, and provide them a storytime while we're there. Then we go to Beaver Dam, then we go to Mechanicsville. I know these locations are not particularly geographically close to each other, but the point is, is we could hit several spots throughout the day. Then we would have Hanover, excuse me, then we would leave Hanover Day and we'd have a Goochland Day in the week. And we'd go to a senior center in the morning, we'd go to another senior center there, then Parks and Rec, and then to a park in the afternoon. So there's a lot of variety, and the reality is, is this vehicle can do multiple stops throughout the day. They're going to have hours of operation that are somewhat consistent with our current library operations. Other outreach opportunities for potential expansion of the service going forward. Books by mail. Books by mail, the federal government and the United States Postal Service offers a program where libraries can provide free of charge materials via the postal service to patrons that qualify. And the qualifying definition is blind or physically handicapped. It's a great program that I developed when I was in another place, and it's a fairly low-cost way to expand our outreach services in the future. We'd have to have some initial investment of things like mailer bags, which are very durable canvas-type bags that can go through the post office. But it's a fairly, having done the research before, it's a fairly simple process once we jump through a few hoops. But that's a potential expansion opportunity. This is very inexpensive. Community programming. As I mentioned, when we're going to parks, when we're going to schools, we can do youth services programming, as an example. But we can also have adult services staff in doing programming in the nursing homes, in the memory care facilities. Some of the most impactful programs that I ever personally did were inside memory care units where the folks were suffering from dementia. And we would do very, very cool programs from like bringing up historic radio shows, and you'd be fascinated by the responses from people that weren't necessarily responding. So it's a very, it brings up a lot of potential options that we could have. There's also the potential of jailhouse services or homebound delivery for those folks that we want to go to a facility and deliver in person. There's a ton of options for potential expansion of outreach services over time. But as I mentioned on that first slide, the four I would begin to concentrate with, the bookmobile services, the lobby stop services, the community stops, the school stops. So those would be my, those would be my first line in what this would be. So I guess I'll ask, what questions do you have?
So just to clarify, people would be able to apply for a library card at the bookmobile?
Hundred percent. You can do pretty much everything you can do in a physical building. Get a card, check materials out, request holds. So for example, if you come to one of our community stops and you are coming to the park every month, you can get access to all the collection, not just on the bookmobile, but you can request a hold, just like I can, if the book I want is at Goochland now, the courier will bring it to where I want it to be. So it will run exactly like a physical branch, just on wheels. The advantage of, before I go back to questions, the advantage of this service too is it is highly flexible. If we start a stop, that is what I use to term a non-productive stop, meaning it's slow, we could adjust the time, we could adjust the location, we can do a lot of things. The advantage of a vehicle is it's entirely mobile, so we don't have to keep going to a spot that's not productive for us. So it's very flexible.
I have a question. Have we been able to measure the amount of demand for this service?
So, I will, I will talk to you in a minute about, one of the reasons I included, back up.
Other than a great idea, you know, I'd like to know what's the demand for that before we buy a truck and invest in the services, pay for the operation and all that.
Great question. So, great question. So, part of it goes back to why, what are we trying to solve for? This isn't, we just think this is an important thing. It's looking at our current statistics and user data. PRL has a massive gap in who could be using us and who does use us. Now, why is that? I can't tell you exactly. But I can tell you, looking at a map of our service area and looking at library card users and patrons, it looks like Swiss cheese. Those users are concentrated in the circles around the libraries. And then you have these larger, more rural areas as an example, that are underutilizing library services. That could be because they don't know what the library offers, because they rarely get over there to get in there. It could be a variety of reasons. But we also have those folks inside of facilities that can't get to the library, so there's multiple populations that we're serving. So, demand. In my experience running mobile libraries, what I saw, having created a department in central Ohio near Cincinnati, I started it from scratch. And in three years, it was doing more traffic in and out of its doors than all but two of the physical branches. And it was a system our size. So this has the opportunity, depending on what stops we're using, how we're concentrating its efforts, to be bigger than the majority of our branches when it comes to circulating and programming numbers. Now, the other thing that I used to track, because early on, there was a concern from the physical branches that said, well, you're going to cannibalize our current user base. Because if a patron can go to a community stop and they no longer have to come into the library, they won't. So I started tracking that data. And what I found was the massive majority of the people that we created cards for never had any interaction with the library before. We created thousands of new users from this. And what we also tracked is the conversion rate from a bookmobile card, so a bookmobile is their home card, to a regular card. We had a few restrictions on a bookmobile patron card because of the small size of our collection. What we didn't want is, and PRL has a 75-item checkout, what we would hate to have, is we'd hate to have, you know, a bunch of families come in, check out all 75, and then we have these four whole bays emptied out. So we would probably have some level of restriction on somebody who's a bookmobile user. But what we saw is a 65 percent conversion rate from getting the initial bookmobile card, they'd never interacted with the library before, 65 percent of those people went into a physical branch and upgraded to a regular card. So we were not cannibalizing the physical branches, we were expanding the pie. And that is what I believe. And this number right here, I've never seen such a low number. That, and I'll talk to my peers in other libraries, because when I was looking for these numbers over the last week, I was shocked that we have such a low take-up rate. And I think there's a variety of reasons, not all of which I can tell you, but the reality is, my goal is that we have over 75 percent of our residents here in Hanover and Goochland County that do not utilize our service. And I believe personally, based on my professional experience, that if we were to make the effort to provide them service, a lot of them would utilize it.
May I just say that in, piggybacking on what Rudy said, I think that last week Zach and Barb and I met with some friends of the library, members, Goochland Library, and with one of the supervisors, Kane. And he said, the two most important things that he got calls about were lack of transportation and lack of internet service. And that these people would likely come to the library but had no way to get there. And Goochland has a very rural area that is highly underserved, and that's why this kind of outreach, to me, would really expand.
But I will tell you, just from the Hanover perspective too, in looking at the library card user concentrations, this is not just Goochland.
Right.
So I just want to stress that because I think looking at a map and seeing Goochland, it's like no-brainer. But from Hanover's perspective as well, there, this 23 percent includes both Hanover and Goochland. So this is not, you know, there is an increase possible because Hanover has massive portions of its area, surface area, that are underutilizing the library. And a large portion of it, in my opinion, is because of accessibility.
Okay, so, so based on Barbara's addition to the demand question, let's talk numbers. What would a truck cost?
Okay.
And what would it cost to operate?
Okay, let me go into that next, because I have a totally different slideshow for that. So, a bookmobile, this kind of rehashes some of the same information, which I won't go over again. But, estimated cost. I used, and just for personal background for people who are listening, I've mentioned this to the board before. I used to be on the Association of Bookmobile and Outreach Services. It's a board of directors, it's a national organization that represents folks inside of libraries and other organizations that do a lot of outreach. I reached out to the executive director, who's an old friend of mine, to confirm these numbers, generally speaking, are accurate. The current cost for a similar vehicle, what I demonstrated here in that photo, is about $400,000. That would provide us the vehicle and the customization needed. So what happens is it goes to a specialty vehicle developer, they basically get the chassis, and then whatever we want inside, they put it in. So roughly $400,000. Then, the initial book and material collection would be around another $100,000. And the reality with a collection like this is you are putting a bunch of materials on the physical vehicle, and then you're having an expanded collection sitting in the space where the staff are, so that every night they can restock. Because a lot of that 3,500 is going to go out every single day.
Okay.
So about $500,000 is the upfront investment. Now, annual operations. That is, what I am conservatively estimating is between $15,000 and $25,000 a year for everything. That includes the Wi-Fi, that includes the gas, that includes the increased insurance, that includes the wear and tear on any vehicle that we have. So those would be in future fiscal years, because the build time on this vehicle is between 12 and 18 months. So as I began, if, you know, if the board approves the purchase of a vehicle, the conversation will begin with our partners over at Fleet, because they have specialty vehicles, we could probably use some of their vendors that they have, because all the specialty vehicle makers, generally speaking, make this type of vehicle. So we have existing relationships with those folks. So I would begin reaching out and getting bids for what we would want. But generally speaking, that is kind of that total number.
What about the cost of where you park it?
Yeah.
And storing the books for the bookmobile? Wouldn't it require more storage area?
So, right now, my idea is, because I talked to Dana over at the county, and they're going to figure it out, but they'll entertain the idea of putting us the vehicle over on the county complex, because we need two things. One big one, we need the ability to plug in, so the vehicle runs like any other vehicle with a motor engine. So, you know, a truck engine is what drives the vehicle from spot to spot. Then, the interior of the bookmobile is run by one of two things, a battery backup system or a generator. Generators have ongoing maintenance issues in my experience, so it's not the ideal option. So the ideal option from my perspective is do battery backup. But what we would need accessibility to is the ability, in an RV, they have something called a shoreline, which is basically a large electrical line going into a 220-volt line in the, similar to what you'd have in your laundry room. And we would need accessibility to plug in the vehicle to electrical every single night. Now, we could install that pretty much anywhere. The cost is not, you know, not insurmountable. But if we were to put the staff at the Hanover branch in the future, in the upstairs area, we have room for shelving up there, and we also have accessibility to plug in the vehicle in the parking lot there. So that's my thought for that space going forward, post some work that needs done.
All right, as I see a pause here. All right, so the next question is, you know, this is, this is a question of, do we spend five, a half a million dollars or so, plus any additional expenses, on a bookmobile for this purpose? Or do we spend half a million dollars and all the other things we talked, just talking about today, refreshing Ashland, getting administrative costs taken care of and all the reserve fund, and any other thing that hasn't been discussed today? And I'm just playing devil's advocate, so you guys can think it out.
Yep.
You know, half a million dollars is a lot of money.
Yes.
And we'll tell you that.
Yeah.
And so there's a big opportunity cost to go this route versus any other route, which the friends of the library and all the people in this room would also like to see as a priority.
Yeah.
So can I counter you?
No, I'm just, I just want you to think about it.
You can add to it.
I can add to it. So, we're at a 23 percent of users. So if we can do an outreach program and grow that to just 35, 40, don't you think we'd have more revenue coming in some degree, where we could then work on the things that we need to work out, like the Ashland refresh? We would have more resources to then use.
Well, that's, that's an excellent point. As the attorney would tell you, that's a great counterbalance to the expense, because we're now extending outreach, revenue goes up. And that's, that's not an argument, but that's actually, you know, a great tool for reasoning why we should do this in support of that. All I'm asking is that you think of the options. I'm not advocating for it or against it. Although I have my preferences, I do agree with you, I think you and I agree. It's a great opportunity to share the wealth that we have here in the library system. And a great way to build our network, which is what you're talking about here, the 23 percent.
Yeah.
And I'm all for that. But from a classical financial analyst position, you want to look at the opportunity cost also.
Sure.
There's other things we'd like to do that we haven't even discussed today.
Absolutely.
You know, and I know immediately you guys are thinking, well, yeah, you know, I'd like to add that second floor to the Ashland Library and whatever else.
The 500,000 number is kind of a ceiling, because, as Barb mentioned, we met with the friends of the Goochland Library. Goochland County has $105,000 and change in a proffer that we could potentially use part or all of this for. We have potential, and this is my view, because I've seen it work wonderfully in other library systems, the vehicle is a rolling billboard. And it allows us, and the way I would use it, is helping us find partners that are willing to sponsor things like our summer reading program. And part of our pitch is we would put the sponsors on our promotional materials, but also on the vehicle. And it could be changeable, it could be something where over time, we could have this as just a potential option. And one of the things that bringing in sponsorship revenue allows us to do is allows us to partner with community organizations or companies that then have buy-in into what the library's doing, because now they're benefiting. So it marries us closer with those people in the community. But the other thing it allows us to do is bring in additional revenue so that we can expand our summer reading programs. So we can do more during summer reading, we can have better giveaways, whatever we want to do. So it gives us optionality for those things. So it's not necessarily all about, you know, what it's going to cost us potentially. And we could always fundraise off of this too. We could basically, you know, ask, ask for help from those wonderful friends, organizations that we have, or community partners. And we would be able to say, you know, this bookmobile generously donated by the friends of the so-and-so library and the so-and-so family foundation. So we definitely have those type of opportunities with this. And my view is 500 is a ceiling, not necessarily the money in its entirety that we would spend. So the first thing is I'll ask, the creation of the outreach services department. These are married, but they're not the same thing. That bookmobile is inside of the outreach services department. So I'd like to get a motion on the approval of an outreach services department for Monkey Regional Library.
Well, I was just going to say, I think one of the things that...
Well, I was just going to say, I think one of the things that we realized as we were talking in the Finance Committee meeting about this is that we are going to look at some fiscal year '27 information, and that's going to be a baseline request from Hanover County that would keep everything kind of stable without the Outreach Department. But adding an Outreach Department also adds personnel to our overall thing. So I'm wondering, could we go ahead and look at that first?
Yeah, totally.
And then, because I think that's an important piece of the pie.
Yeah, that's totally fine. The reason I waited till after, just so you know my mental space, is if you say no to one, then it's baseline budget. Because I'm going to show you two different budgets and let the board decide which direction they'd like to go. So let me move forward.
Is that okay with, does everybody understand?
Yeah, the next question is what's it going to cost? Okay, so in your board packs, there are some of these numbers that you'll see, but I'm just going to kind of go over, excuse me, go over the overview for everybody and then I'll talk about, I'll talk about this in two different ways. So I'm referring to this budget as the baseline budget. This budget here is basically continuing operations as they are with an increase in our request for payroll at 3%, which is consistent with our partners at Hanover County. Health insurance, our partners at Hanover County are currently expecting a 12% rate. That's what they're budgeting for, so we're marrying that budget. That is a variable here where that could potentially go up or down. We're not 100% sure yet. The other thing that we broke out in this that is for your consideration is a new, newly added HR position. So a little history of this, this was actually inside of the budget in previous fiscal years. However, with the loss of some of our counties, previously, we removed it to balance the budget. So this is not totally a new idea. This is really putting that position back. Currently, Pamuky Regional Library has no HR personnel and we have almost 120 staff members. So it's, right now, the functions of HR are chopped up into about five different positions. So this would consolidate all of that into one HR person that would help with recruiting and retention, would help with personnel matters, would help with the evaluation process, and participate in all system-wide hiring, as examples of what that position would do. So, our operational increase, and we'll go into the details in a moment, but you'll see an increase of $121,000 for our operations. Our books and material request goes up $20,000. Our payroll increase, which is accounting for the 3% merit, is $65,000. That added HR position, $75,000. That includes the entire cost of salary, benefits, et cetera. Then, there is the proposed 12% increase for our health insurance costs, which is $47,000. So in total, the fiscal year change in our allocation request is $330,000. You see below, we took out a request from this fiscal year in the Reserve Fund. As you know, you approved money from the Reserve Fund for materials this fiscal year, so that's coming out. And we also expect our state aid grant to increase about $25,000. So you see all of that accounted for here. So let me go to the next page. So here is a bit of a breakdown for you to kind of see where the 2026 numbers stand versus the 2027 numbers. So as you see, Goochlin, Hanover, state aid, other, this is a refund we get every year generally, and then reserve fund allocations. You see this number here is that rent portion we talked about earlier. That's why that's coming out of the Reserve Fund. This fiscal, as I mentioned just previously, you all approved an additional money. We're taking that out of this fiscal year, so that's why you see that drop there. But you see the adjustments up or down in the case of this. So you see the adjustments up for Goochlin's request on the baseline budget is 6%. Hanover's is 8%. State aid is going to go up 5% and then we have that decrease there. So our total allocation request from our county partners would be just over 6% increase year-over-year. Just a few of the numbers that I wanted to draw your attention to. So below, you see all of our basic categories, what we're looking at. You see, obviously, the largest number is line 19, salaries and benefits. So our total request went from 3.8 in this fiscal year. It's going to go up to just over $4 million the next fiscal year, an increase of $188,000. We see the books and materials going up. We see continuing education going up. A big one here is contractual and equipment. So this is to do some of the technology upgrades that we desperately need. So for example, in contractual, we have our integrated library system, which is the function that makes everything on the service desks work, coming up for renewal. So that's part of that. There's also the purchase of productivity tools and communication tools for all PRL staff, which we're going to start integrating shortly, which is the Office 365 suite that we're buying for staff right now. We don't have any such thing. We use a hodgepodge of internal things and storage tools that limit us. For example, one thing that we do, Pamuky Regional Library has one Zoom account that we purchase every year that is a shared account for all staff members. So this purchase of a productivity tool like Office 365 would allow for better communication, up and down, all staff. Equipment, there's a large increase in equipment because we have some outdated and retiring X11s, which are our self-checks and tools that we use inside of the branches. They are, our wonderful systems engineer has been hobbling them together. They needed to be retired years ago. So we're looking at replacing all of them in the next fiscal year and this increase will reflect some of that. A small increase on our insurance cost, as I mentioned, benefits. You'll see the telephone increase of 29, excuse me, $26,900, or almost 40%. That is because in the 2026 fiscal year, we added the Montpelier branch. So the Montpelier branch was not accounted for, so that's why you see that large adjustment up in that line item. So there's the increases, there is kind of the breakdown from fiscal '26 for fiscal '27, including that one additional HR staff member, for a total of $330,000 more in the baseline request. What questions do we have about that budget?
What is the vehicle expense?
Zero in this. The purchase, the fiscal year that will be affected by the vehicles going forward will be the next fiscal year because the build time on the vehicle, depending on which vendor we go to, is 12 to 18 months. So we're talking about the purchase of that vehicle would really be affecting operations cost going into that next fiscal year.
So, and this is the baseline without the Outreach Department, right? So not creating an Outreach Department, not having additional.
Correct.
Just the HR person.
Correct.
Yeah, the only addition would be the HR person, but that is, from my perspective, a need that we have to be able to consolidate all of those things together in one person. So I don't know if you have any, you talked about that while I was in the bathroom.
Well, I did mention that right now there are five different positions that all have pieces of HR. This would help us consolidate, but it would also help us to do things like, for example, when our hiring managers hire a position, they do it themselves. They don't have an HR person, which is not necessarily the norm nowadays. That helps protect us for potential litigation and liability issues in the future, having an HR representative that is trained in these interviews. From my personal experience, I generally have never done an interview, and I've done a ton of interviews over the years, without someone from an HR background in that group. So this would help us kind of with multiple things.
Well, and to Christie's point, I think it's an excellent opportunity. I think Terry would agree, from a strategic human resources point of view, that this is an opportunity to improve those turnover statistics and retention statistics clearly if we hire the right person.
Okay, so, I call this the baseline budget. One of the other documents you do have in your pack, and it just kind of breaks down the numbers in a little different way, but it shows, because we're going to want to tell our partners at Hanover and Goochlin, the cost breakdowns per branch. So that following page there, it kind of breaks it down in a little easier way to understand. From the branch perspective, so this is the branch layout. You'll see all the branches listed and the costs per branch. And then, the question of shared expenses is always, is always something we include in this. So at the very bottom, you'll see basically a breakout of the additional money that we're asking from our partners at Hanover County and our partners at Goochlin County for this request. So that information is also in there. And I'll show you this as well in the expanded budget, which we'll go over here in just one moment. So this is kind of option one.
So just to highlight, in this baseline, we're asking for an additional $38,000 from Goochlin and an additional $322,000 from Hanover for the next fiscal year. And if we were to add, for example, the rent, which Mr. Walter, you know, made the point of, into a baseline budget, we're looking probably at a $400,000 ask from Hanover and probably $50,000 or a little bit more from Goochlin, so.
Or conversely, if we integrate the operations from this contractual space into, say, the Atlee configuration, which at least, at a minimum, has been received favorably here, that would eliminate that additional $108,000.
That's true.
Correct.
Yeah. Not for the next year, though. But going forward, yeah.
Yeah, like Christie said, it's probably likely to change in the following, the next fiscal year because our lease doesn't expire until midway in the fiscal year. So the next fiscal year, there's going to have some rent costs, even if on the day our lease ends, we move out, we still have four months of rent, basically, that we would still have to account for in the next fiscal year. So it's not, it's not removing it all at once, but over time.
Well, and see, that works out beautifully and, you know, and in the end of wherever we go, let's say it's internalized, these operations, we're going to need some time to design it, build it out, you know, so that's going to take care of part of that year that we need to account for anyway as we are transitioning here, which I think is the direction we're heading in, to something.
Okay, so this is option two. So, as was just Nick. Do you have, so looking at this spreadsheet, talking at Ace here, who was listening later? Do you have the updated one in the, like, I pull it up and I see the, so I see that one, and I click on it, and it is giving me the 20, 25% baseline and the 5% baseline.
Oh, I think it might be used as the copy of the fiscal year, I think because when we were changing it, it was open. That one at the very top, copy of fiscal year 27.
This one here?
Yes.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
Should it say operations for fiscal year '27? Is that incorrect?
No, that's the last, that's fiscal year '26, operations. It's just comparing it to fiscal year '26 that we're in now.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, that was not, it's not the title of the, okay, I got it.
Yeah, so this is just kind of the overview page once again. So it's talking about the fiscal '26, this was our allocation approved. These are the additional increases in our categories. The things to pay attention to that are different than the previous baseline budget is in this budget, we're asking for three full-time positions to be budgeted for. One is the Outreach Services Manager, heading the new, potential new Outreach Department. Then we have two positions that would be added, one assigned to the Goochlin branch, one assigned to the Hanover branch for purposes of the counties funding those specific positions. So what this budget does is it basically asks the Goochlin, Goochlin County to fund one of these positions, Hanover to fund one of these positions, and the Outreach Manager would be in the shared category, so it's split between the two. So there's kind of the difference. So you'll see the difference between the shared budget, or, excuse me, the previous baseline budget was $330,000 request. This is increasing us because of those additional positions that we're asking for, up to $525,000. So you'll see almost a $200,000 increase between the baseline budget request and the expanded budget request. So here's the breakdown. One of the things you'll see if you're comparing the two documents is a pretty dramatic difference. On the previous budget, we were asking for, Goochlin County was going to pay less in a percentage increase than our partners at Hanover County. The reason they jumped up so high is because as a percentage basis, their fund, they have less positions. So when we add one position to that county, it has an outsized effect in their increase. So, we're asking for $111,000 in additional funds for our Goochlin partners, $445,000 for Hanover. Our increase for state aid stays the same and you'll see the numbers come out there from the Reserve Fund. So that's our increase going from about a 6% increase to 9.87. So it's going up about a 4% difference between the two. On the bottom portion where we're showing the divide out, you'll see that we're not asking for additional money for vehicle because that will come in subsequent fiscal years. In future fiscal years, that number will need to grow to accommodate the potential if a bookmobile is created, but this coming year, that just stays static. The big difference in this one, everything else stays static except for salaries and benefits, which is now including those three additional positions that would be given to the newly created Outreach Department. You'll see the branch, as I mentioned a minute ago, the only change from the baseline to the expanded is going to be borne by our Goochlin partners, at Goochlin branch, they're having that one additional outreach staff member that they're having, and the Hanover branch that would be, they would be assigned a position. Now, the positions will not actually live in those branches. The only reason we assign them is for accounting purposes, basically. You'll see, scroll down a little bit on my spreadsheet here. So if you're looking at the differences, you'll notice this number jumps up because of those additional three staff members.
Zach, I know you've probably explained this, but is there a particular thought process as to why you would assign one of them to Goochlin, who has one library, and one of them to Hanover, who has six libraries?
Because the way the bookmobile will run will be, it will be fairly evenly split in the sense that it's going to go to Goochlin and Hanover.
The same amount of time in each?
Roughly. I mean, it may not be identical, but it's not going to be like 5% one and 95% the other. It's going to be fairly balanced.
That makes sense.
Yeah. And with the shared, because Hanover pays 82% of the shared budget, the Outreach Manager is going to be heavily funded by the allocation from Hanover County.
Right. Okay. That question will come up.
Yes, absolutely. Absolutely.
So I think historically, the board has always been presented with the fiscal year budget in September, and they have then looked to pass a budget in October that would then go on to our jurisdictions. So we're not in a position today where we have to make a decision, but obviously, there's a lot of information here, and I think it would be. And I think it would be not wise for the board to go ahead and approve expanded services without having some county buy-in. We really need to make sure that our jurisdictions and our county partners are willing to buy in on this outreach vision and having a bookmobile. So in some ways, we have to do a little bit of selling to them before, especially before we come with a budget increase of half a million dollars. So, any thoughts about that?
Oh, I think it's very wise, because everybody's asking for a bigger piece of the pie.
Sure.
Not just us.
Absolutely.
And I think that we will have to definitely, and you will have to definitely speak to our supervisors and do as, it's a little bit...
Information and sales, basically. It's a little bit kind of the chicken and the egg thing first, right? Like, there is a vision for an outreach department, a bookmobile. There's also the board wanting to maybe support that vision. But we also need the buy-in before we start delivering budgets that are a lot larger than what they would expect. Just for historical context, last fiscal year, we did not ask for any increase for any of our partners in what they were giving us year over year, so.
I will just say, I was given this yesterday, so it's kind of cool. Montpelier Regional Library had a bookmobile and outreach services for over 70 years. So this is not like a new concept. A lot of the folks that live in this community will remember the legacy of the bookmobile coming. It was ended in 2009 with the Great Recession. So we have this in our culture already. And, you know, those few folks that I've heard, that I've been talking to about this, that have seen this come up, particularly staff, a lot of them remember when the bookmobile service was discontinued. They remember the service themselves, whether personally riding on the bookmobile, which one of the staff I was talking to yesterday, Atlee, was talking about how much fun she loved going out on the bookmobile as a staff member. So we do have this as part of our culture, and we can kind of help sell that too with our partners in the county, where it's, this is not, you know, out of whole cloth, coming from nowhere. This is something that we had for the massive majority of our history, and it's really a blip in time where we didn't have it.
I think one of the things when we're talking with our counties especially is to explain to them some about the staffing of this, that I don't know how it was staffed before.
Yeah, I don't.
And I think we need to be able to have enough good information to take to our counties to say, you know, that not only are these people going to be in a bookmobile, these are some of the other things that they will be doing with the bookmobile and they will be doing in the communities, you know, that it's more than, we've talked a lot about the bookmobile, but there's some other pieces that these, that the outreach department will do too.
Yeah.
And I think we need to make sure we emphasize that, that it's not...
Yeah, because really, it is a package.
Yeah.
In the sense that you can have an outreach department without a bookmobile, but the bookmobile and the outreach department, in my vision, are married. So.
Well, I may suggest that you solve, this excellent point, that you solve this by creating a possible job description of what these outreach managers' job is. So it answers that exact question, because we want to be able to answer all these questions before we get to the board, because when it comes up, we go, well, we haven't really thought about that, then, you know, our whole proposal is out the door.
Sure.
Also, I think it's, you know, I certainly agree with Christie's suggestion, we really want board buy-in. Because from their point of view, in their minds, they have a feel for the whole county. You know, we're more micro-purposed, they have a macro view, we have a more micro-purpose view of the library system, you know, and our customers. So if we have buy-in from them, then they're more likely to approve this budget increase, and it comes down to dollars and cents. That's why I said, where's the demand?
Sure.
Because I'm thinking outside of our realm here and what the board would say. If the board says, that's a great idea, that's a wonderful idea, and Christie started out on the budget committee, and we've mapped it out, we've answered these other questions, here's all the information, what do you think? And they say, do it. Then we're golden. The rest of the discussion is taken care of, and Jody can be happy we have a bookmobile.
A thing to focus on is the hotspot internet use. I think our counties are struggling with outreach for internet. So, I mean, like, that could help solve a solution while internet's being put in places, is that we can be a solution to the county.
Sure.
And another excellent point, broadband has always been an issue for the county. You know, back to, as far as I can, when I was involved in political campaigns, 2009.
Yeah.
And...
It's something to think about as a talking point?
Yeah, absolutely.
Definitely want to add that. And research it.
Mm-hmm.
You know, to say it, that it's an issue is one thing, and for the board to say, well, we spent a billion dollars over the last 15 years solving that, well, you're saying there's a problem. So this is a very important point.
So I know Zach and Jamie and I sat down with Brett from county administration to kind of talk initial budgets, and we kind of presented these kind of two ideas to him. Do we know when we need to actually have a budget on the county's desk?
Last year was November 1st.
November 1st.
So I don't know if they're going to stick with that timeline, but at this moment, in my head, I'm trying to kind of stick with that.
To stick with November 1st. So I'm wondering if within the next year, next month, sorry, not the next year, if within the next month, either we can try to present this idea to a board of supervisors meeting, or whether the board members here would be willing to meet together with Zach, with the representatives on the board of supervisors that we are most in touch with, or if we have, are willing just to go to one maybe we don't have contact with, but just to try to present this idea to them individually as like, this is an idea, we want to move forward, what's your feedback? And try to solicit that feedback now already in preparation for deciding, are we going to go with baseline, or are we going to go with an extended, you know, budget?
Another...
I like that idea. In fact, one of our supervisors has offered up his time of services to go over this.
Thank you. I completely agree with what my other favorite barber said. I can think of two supervisors immediately that would love to spend time with us, particularly with something that's a pressing opportunity here.
Yeah.
And timely, you know, in this case, in particular.
Yeah.
And I think Michael Herzog and Danielle will be available, and will make themselves available.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't know if those are the two you're thinking about, but those are the two I'm volunteering.
Yeah. Yeah, no, and I think maybe the Hanover board members, we could kind of just divide up who's in Hanover, and we could pursue trying to sit down and talk with them together with Zach about some of these ways that we want to move forward and have their buy-in.
Sure. We want their support at the board meeting.
Yeah.
We want them to represent us going forward.
Yeah.
100%.
Absolutely. One consequence of moving up that date in October, now having the meeting on the 15th, is it puts a tighter deadline on all of us. And I definitely agree with everyone, everybody's statements. I had planned on scheduling my introduction meeting with all these folks in early October. I would like to continue with that plan. My priority has been meeting with the PRL staff first and then going to our partners in Hanover and Goochlin. However, I'm probably going to have to speed all that up, because I don't want to introduce myself and then immediately say, I'd like more money, please. So I'd like to, I'd like to kind of bifurcate that out a little bit, just for personal reasons.
Is the November 1st a hard deadline?
No, I mean...
October 31st is a hard deadline.
Okay.
That they want our budgets?
They want the budget, yeah.
So maybe, maybe we reconsider that 15th date if we think this is going to be a particular challenge. I hate to make you guys basically come back for approval of a budget in a separate meeting, like, late in the month. You guys know your schedules better than I do, so like, how fast do you think we could get on the docket with all of our partners in the counties to do the pitch effectively?
I think we could get it arranged in Goochlin in the next couple of weeks.
Okay.
But not address Zach's issue of wanting to introduce himself and then come with an ask.
When do you, when do you introduce yourself?
Well, I haven't reached out, because I'm not done with my one-on-ones, but I will reach out immediately now.
Well, the other question is, there is a fifth Wednesday in October. I know we just passed a schedule that would move us up to the third Wednesday as our next meeting. Would the fifth Wednesday be an option for our next meeting? To give us time to have...
So you're talking about the 29th?
Yes, the 29th of October.
Are you suggesting we meet on the 15th and the 29th?
No, no. I'm suggesting we meet on the 29th.
So move that, so that would be an evening meeting as well?
Yes, it would still remain an evening meeting at 6:00 in Montpelier, but would be on the 29th versus...
If it's available.
We'll check the room. It may be at the administrative support center.
Oh, they're checking now.
Jamie's checking right now.
Oh, okay. Thank you, Jamie.
They're on it.
Yes, they got it.
These are good people.
Yeah, that works for us. I mean, doesn't it?
So then, tentatively, what I'll do is I'll try to schedule myself, just in introductions, that first week of the month, that sixth, the week of the 6th, and then probably between the week of the 13th and the 20th, we will all begin meeting with the supervisors separately on this. So first meeting, just introduction, just, I'm not asking for anything. Second meeting, see how they feel about this and answer any questions. And then I can come a little more prepared with things like a job description for this, more data on the impacts. I kind of demonstrated earlier on the library usage, but I can dive into that more and get more information specifically tailored to the counties. I think I can parse that information out by that.
Is there any way you can get some community feedback or buy-in too, to present to them? I think if they hear from community that this is a want, that they're interested in it, that will also help.
Can we do, can we do a survey with Orange Boy that we would, we could launch? Can we do that from the website? So we can, we can work on that.
Yeah. Well, along those lines, kind of. I'm just wondering, and I'm not in favor of having a ton of meetings, but if we were to get some feedback, might there be a good reason for us to have a workshop before our 29th meeting? Where we hashed around a bunch of, I mean, where we can just really talk about this? Is there any value to that?
Um...
As opposed to it all occurring at the meeting?
So...
Because if we bring, if we do our homework and we meet with our county administrators and our board, that would also give the public a chance to attend the workshop if they want. Now, at workshops, so generally, there isn't citizen comment, is there?
We could, but honestly, we could do like a town hall.
Yeah.
So we could do like, and it doesn't necessarily have to be like what we do here. We would still follow the open, the open meeting rules and stuff, we would still post it like that, we would have a very loose agenda, but basically, it's a town hall similar to, you know, I attended Supervisor Hudson's last night, where it's basically a conversation back and forth. So we could do something...
That's kind of what I'm thinking.
We could do something like that?
To gather, not at our meeting where we're making the decision, but to gather, to talk about it, and to get public feedback.
Yeah. And I can invite things like the Friends groups to kind of try to get, try to get some of our partners, because I, I don't know how much, I mean, we saw today a lot of public participation, but, you know...
And that would most...
We would try to, we would try to draw that in as much as possible.
That would likely be an evening, I would think. It'd be like a 6 o'clock meeting.
Sure, yeah. Yeah. And I don't think the whole board has to be there for that, I mean...
I do.
You do? Because we're not going to make a motion on anything, so there's not like any quorum needed.
No, no, I don't, but I do think that...
Just to attend?
Just to attend.
Oh, yeah, sure, sure, sure.
And to participate.
Yeah.
And not to vote.
Yeah, yeah.
But this is informational, that's why I say workshop.
Here's the thing, do we want to have two separate ones? You want one for Hanover and Goochlin, or do you just want to have one?
I just say have one, because we're meeting now.
Okay, so do you want to do that at like the Ashland Library, since it's centrally located?
It depends on, I don't know.
Availability, we'll find...
You know, if the people are interested, they'll come. We will give them the opportunity.
Yeah.
And I think that, yeah, I mean, I'd like to make it accessible to Goochlin, but I think we could have, we would have to have a space where theoretically, we might have high participation.
Sure.
So...
Even one of the high school auditoriums or something.
Yeah, I mean, it could rule out smaller...
I honestly think our, most of our community rooms can accommodate what we would expect.
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, I wouldn't worry about that too much.
So, and I think one other thing that, I mean, having a PowerPoint is obviously great, but I think it would also be good to have something that we can put in people's hands that just kind of outlines, you know, some of the things like you were saying with the library card uptake and like some of the, you know, just those things that are like in people's face in one place. Because I often see, even if you go to a board of supervisors meeting with a PowerPoint, you know, they usually have something in their hand that they're looking at that kind of summarizes that information for them, so that they can also take it away and have a later...
At the minimum, an agenda, this is what we're going to be talking about tonight, maybe a couple of bullet points, so they can go, oh, okay.
Well, pictures of the bookmobile, picture, you know, things that are going to stick...
I mean, just community... I think it would need to be buy-in about a logo, maybe.
Okay.
So, we want it to be before the 29th. So is everybody okay with moving that October meeting to the fifth Wednesday, October 29th?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, but what if we have a...
Are you able to see whether Montpelier's available? It's available, so 6:00 PM.
I think we ought to have a motion.
Yes, so could somebody make a motion?
Make a motion that we move the 15th meeting to the 29th, so we can further discuss and finalize this.
The budget?
Budget, yeah.
Okay. So Jody?
So move...
Barb, second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, so we've moved that.
And now we need to figure out a meeting for our town hall?
Well, maybe we do, I mean, since we all locked up 15th at 6:00 PM, should we do it then?
We can, we can do that.
Since we've already determined that.
Yeah.
So we have two Wednesday evenings in October. Okay? If that works for everybody.
And if, how far is Montpelier? I said, we already know Montpelier's open, do we just want to retain there, or do we want to see if Ashland is?
Montpelier's actually closer than Ashland.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, it's just all bad.
Across country, but it's closer.
Yeah.
I mean, you've already scheduled the...
Once again, I say if they, you know, if they want to come, they'll come.
Yeah.
And we'll stream it, I guess?
Well, we'll do this, I mean...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
Yeah.
And then we will, with our delegations from the jurisdictions, talk amongst ourselves how we can facilitate sitting down with board of supervisors members with you during that time too.
Okay.
Is that a good plan forward?
That's a great plan.
Okay.
Okay.
Good job.
I like that. All right, are we ready to move on to the Hanover branch?
Last thing.
Okay.
Or last big thing. So, little history on this. I met with the branch manager, Madhu, early on in my tenure here in August, and we were talking about, we were talking about the branch and the patrons and the staff and all that, and she brought to my attention concerns with the building's maintenance, particularly in the basement area of the branch. I'm going to show you a few pictures later on. The history of this building, this building was built in 1941. It's a historic building. The basement has been used for a lot of different purposes over the decades, but it has been largely abandoned and just a storage facility for the last 25 to 30 years. The basement has suffered from some moisture issues, some flooding issues in the past. When it rains, there are puddles down there. And the branch manager mentioned to me that there was, there were some maintenance issues down there, so I said I wanted to see it. So on my, on my first visit there, I saw it. The basement is in pretty bad shape. It's in disrepair. There's water damage, there's some stored stuff down there that has been just subjected to water over the years, so it's largely ruined. We have things like old personnel files that are down there that are no longer usable, some old furniture that was stored down there, no longer usable. Pretty much everything in the basement is going to need to be worked on. I'm going to go over a few things here. There's damage to the floor... There's damage to the floor frames, the flooring, the door frames. The weather stripping is all needing replaced. The windows are original to the building. Some of them are even broken out and covered by Plexi, not Plexiglas, that cheap wood you get at the, the department store.
Plywood.
Plywood, thank you. It's largely rotted out, you can literally shake it. The lighting, most of the lighting is burnout and were not operational down there, so it's very dark. When I go down there, or when I'm, when I have to go down there, I bring a flashlight because many of the rooms are not, don't have light. The, everything is worn. There's a stairwell that leads from the main floor down into the space. When you walk down it, it wobbles. The wood is deteriorated to the point where it needs to be replaced. The handrail is wobbly and not stable. The space needs general cleaning, painting refresh. Everything that is down there needs to be thrown away or disposed of. There's electrical work because of the moisture and damage to the masonry. There, there needs to be, electrical work needs to be redone. Currently, we have a server room down there in the basement. The servers are currently totally exposed to the elements down there, which is not custom. The clearance for things like, there is just, there's a lot of damage. All the old plumbing is down there. There are spaces where there are empty holes in the floor where there used to be toilets or plumbing, so it's just a hole. There's spaces where you can walk and easily trip because the tile has come up and it's, it's, it's exposed. This area has probably not been, has probably not been worked on in some period of time to this space. As I mentioned, the stairwell, everything needs to be refreshed from the damaged floors to the painting in the building and everything in between, in the, in the basement area. I talked to, just a little, little background, when I went down there, what I saw was a concern. Last week, I met with the General Services Director for Hanover County, Dana Fox. I expressed my concerns with the space and I took her and a couple of her team over there later in the day. So they've seen the space. They were not aware of the extent to which it had deteriorated. This has been an ongoing issue. We, we went back in the records and found evidence from 2018 that we were kind of reporting moisture issues and water damage in that space. The building, the outside, they did some remediation work in the spring to try to help with water coming into the basement. When I was down there with Dana, it had rained that day and there were standing puddles, which I pointed out. So they did some level of remediation, which included basically taking the, basically those pla- you, you've seen them before, downspout, plastic downspouts you get at Home Depot and they took some of those and ran them off the gutters. Part of the problem with the building and the deterioration that's happened is the water will run straight off of the gutters, which are three-inch gutters, which standard is five. So the shorter gutters, they will run right down off the wall and you can see the water damage all down the exterior of the building. You can look up in the, the eases of the building and you see the water damage. And it's flowing straight down onto the foundation and onto the sides. The other problem is the landscaping grading. The water damage over the years, so imagine the building is here, the grading is, is not done properly, so it's, it's pooling right onto the exterior foundation in the exterior side of the building. So that, so this is going to continue until that's fixed. They have cut back some of the bushes, but in my opinion, they're going to have to probably do all new landscaping around the entire thing to make sure that that water's not flowing into the building going forward and then repairs. This is part of the reason, so I've, I've met the, I met with facilities, talked to them, did a walkthrough with them, so they saw the space, they're aware of it. They're going to have some folks come in and look at the space to, to come up with next steps. Part of the reason that I'm not particularly interested in moving staff into the Hanover Branch at this time is because the extensive amount of renovation and work that's going to need to be done on this space is, is going to present a challenge for, for the county.
As someone who's physically gone and seen the damage as well, he's not exact writing, not at all, no.
After the board, after my introduction to the Board of County Supervisors, I said, "I'm going to go over there and take some pictures," and I, I talked to Chrissy and Jody. And I took them down there. It's, it's, it's bad. I've never seen anything like it in my entire career.
Do you have any idea of how quickly they might move on this?
No, I do not. Part of the challenge is just, it's a historic building, so that adds complications to whatever we would do. The issue of getting everything that's currently out of there tossed is another challenge. I, I don't have any timeline.
Now, can the renovations and everything that they need to do, can that library operate while that's going on, you think? Or will there be periods where we?
There will probably need to be some periods where the library is closed because of the work that has to be done. I don't know that, but based on what I understand that the challenges with that building are, we're going to have to close, likely.
So I know one of the projects that's in the works is the wheelchair ramp. Like, obviously, if there's going to be major changes outside, it would make sense to delay that.
Update that with the-
With whatever else they're doing, correct? Or I don't want us to build a wheelchair ramp and then we've got to-
Yeah, to me, in my brain, because we did just, and I brought, I brought them for you guys because they're now publicly available. The Architectural Review Board did approve the, the work to the ramp now. So that was done last Thursday. So that can move forward. However, I've not heard a timeline on when the actual contractors will be doing that work. To me, the work that needs done at Hanover is, I would say, separate because it's likely to take a while.
I don't think right now that ramp is even compliant right now.
Yeah, the, the ramp is currently unusable. I mean, it just has holes in it and you, you could, you cannot safely use it.
Is there any of this work or the cost of this work that's borne simply by the county versus Pamunke Regional Library?
The county, it's the county's building.
It's county's building.
So you're just making us aware?
Correct.
That our library is in a county building that's deteriorating?
Because it may affect operations of the branch for some period of time. And depending on the extent and the timeline, we may move staff on a, on a, on a semi, like, we may move staff to another branch during potential work.
That makes sense.
Okay.
So.
Thank you for that. So I see you're, you'll provide quarterly updates to the board?
Correct, or, or as I get, you know, more, more benchmarks, absolutely.
Okay, so the last thing here on our schedule is updates under new business. There any?
I have a couple of very quick things. Because I've been talking forever. It's probably the record longest board meeting.
No. No.
Okay, good, because we're, because we're three hours here, so I'm embarrassed. So just, just a couple of updates for me. I've met with 72 of the PRL staff, and so I plan on finishing that over the next couple of weeks. And this is a conversation with them to hear from them what they need from me. What are the areas of opportunity that we have to help them, the patrons, all of that? I've had some consistent themes which I wanted to share with the board. Historically, there's been a feeling where communication, particularly from the top down, has been lacking. So I'm working on a few things to help improve communication from administration down into the branches. So starting in October, we're going to begin a, a, a communication strategy called Weekly Announcements, which is basically information from the director's office, straight down to all staff members. One of the things I keep hearing about is the staff often don't know that something changed or it wasn't communicated effectively in the past. So this is to help with those things. It's also to provide updates with staff. Going forward, with the purchase of Office 365 for everyone, that will also help our communication strategy because we'll be able to have our internal SharePoint sites, which are advertising deadlines, which are communicating new policies and procedures, which will be able to communicate effectively with all staff. So there's a couple of things I'm working on to improve communication. Another theme is training. There's a pretty consistent theme that, and historically, back in the day, we did have a training department that was ended around the time of the bookmobile, before COVID at least. And there's been a feeling from most of the staff that I've talked to, both management team and support, support staff, that there is not consistent training. You go from one branch and you do one thing, you go to another branch and you do another. So all of these are going to come, and I'll talk a little bit about work groups in a moment. We're going to develop work groups with the plan of identifying those areas of opportunity and then begin working on fixes. I'll talk more about that in a moment. I did mention with the Hanover Branch, but I talked to Dana Fox about some other things too. One consistent theme with, with all of our libraries is deferred building maintenance. There have been things that have been largely neglected or ignored from the facilities teams and I, I'm trying to work with them to kind of solve some of those problems. There's been some longstanding issues that has went unfixed, trying to work with them. I'm working on currently a budget for our facilities requests for the next fiscal year, which I'll have to Dana by the 30th of September. That's her due, her due, due date for that. I'll just give you a couple of examples that I know the board is aware of. For example, the lighting here in the youth services area at the Mechanicsville Branch has long been requested to be updated because if you walk into that space, it's very dim. It looks like, where are the lights? Well, those are the lights. Things like that. There's some canned lights at our Ashland, at Lee Branch, excuse me, that have been burnt out for some period of time and never replaced. There's broken shingles, they're not quite shingles, but they're, they're these, these pieces of basically aesthetic around the building that have been broken for some time and it's very cosmetically difficult to look at. And so the county has, the county has some of these things where they've been issued for some period of time and so part of my budget that I'm working on is requesting all of these things being fixed, as well as some other smaller things. And the last thing that I'll mention from my one-on-ones with staff, and this is as close to universal as poor communication. The staff have been dealing with outdated technology for years. Our, as the board is aware, we have internet servers that we run everything from. Those are 13 years old. We have publicly accessible computers as well as staff computers. Many of them are almost a decade old. They're slow, they crash constantly. We have printers that don't work, we have scanners that don't work. We have a long list of outdated technology that I'm working with the systems engineer to begin updating. Any questions on those four before I briefly mention the work groups? So to help me with this process, I have talked to the library leadership team. We are going to develop five different work groups. Their concentrations will be HR policy updates, training updates, library policy updates, technology updates, and special projects, which will include things like the relocation of the Administrative Support Center, the creation of a bookmobile department, or any other thing that the director would decide. These will solicit feedback from staff at all levels of the organization so that we can better get buy-in. One of the things that I keep hearing in my one-on-ones with folks is the feeling that basically decisions were made with no input from staff whatsoever. And that's including the management team that was saying those things. So this design of the work groups is to solicit feedback from not only managers and leaders in the library, but also the frontline folks that are oftentimes dealing with the problems that we're trying to solve. So in October, right now, I'm, I'm going to appoint a, a chair and a vice chair of each of these work groups and then we're going to solicit four or five people on every one of these. Some of the things that we're going to be working on, which I'll just show you briefly. For example, the Pamunke Regional Library Policy Manual. The policy manual is our circulation policies. So those things we have in-house to help us basically run. The last time this was updated was 2008. When I look through this, it is old and antiquated. Much of this is totally irrelevant for what we do today. As an example, HR policies. HR policies are totally out of date, no longer relevant, updated in 2008 as well. So some of this stuff has been lacking updates for 20 years. So these are things, these are challenges I'm finding and the staff are talking to me about in my one-on-ones. So these type of things are projects that going forward, we are going to work to solve. These, some of these things are going to be very quick fixes because we look at them and say, "This is a tweak." Many of them are total rewrites. So, just as an FYI. The technology updates, I'm working with the systems engineer. We are buying, out of this fiscal year's operational budget, our servers because there's a lot of challenges that the staff are reporting that we cannot apply a fix with our current servers because we do not have the storage space on them. So we have some fixes in place for things like our mobile printing. We literally cannot put the fix in, into practice until we have these updated servers. The reality is though, there may be, towards the end of the fiscal year, requests from me to, looking at the budget, change how we're spending things because technology is a massive area where we have to update basically everything. There's, there's a few updates. That's some of what I've been working on over the last month. And that's, that's, that's all I promised.
Just after the meeting, I need to get the list of that, those five work groups.
Yeah, 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 I got it.
Actually, could you?
I can email all this if you want. I'll, I'll type it up, I'll type it up and do that tomorrow, yeah.
So on behalf of the board, I'd like to thank Zach and his administrative team for all of your hard work. I know there's a lot of things that you're-
It's not, it's ju, it's not just me, and I, I, I'll just say this. The staff that I've been meeting with are great and I'm so happy that they're willing to express their honest feedback because I can't fix a problem that I don't know exists. So I really, I really appreciate the management teams and the, the staff in general because they've been wonderful at helping me identify these problems.
Wonderful. Thank you for your energy and enthusiasm to address them. All right.